The twenty-sixth session of the Senate in the third regular session of the nineteenth Congress is hereby called to order. Senator Grispo shall lead the chamber in prayer. You may proceed now.
Sa ngalan ng ama, ng anak, ng Espirito Santo, amen. Panginoong lumikha, ang aming pong pasasalamat sa buhay na ipinagloob mo sa bawat isa sa amin. Salamat sa pagkakataong gumising bawat umaga at sa pagkakaroon ng dahilang bumangon. Salamat sa pagkakataong magmahal sa aming pamilya, kapwa at bayan. Salamat sa pagtatanim sa aming puso ng paghahangad na maglingkod at maglingkod ng may puso. Salamat sa pagkakataong gumawa ng mabuti kung may nagawaman kaming mali. Salamat sa pagkakataong maitama ito at makabawi. Salamat sa tiwalang ipinagloob mo sa amin na mamuno sa aming bansa. Pribilehiyong itong aming pinahahalagahan gaya ng pagpapahalaga namin sa buhay at kapakanan ng aming mga kababayan sa aming gawain ngayong hapon. Panginoon, pagbigyan mo kami ng pagkakataon, makapagtrabaho ang bawat senado na nasa bulwagang ito at bigyan ang direksyon at laging paggabay. Lahat ng aming trabaho sa inyo ay aming alay, amen. Sa ngalan ng ama, ng anak, ng Espirito Santo, amen.
Thank you, Senator Poe. Secretary, will please call the roll.
All call-up members, the Honorable Senator Binay, Senator Cayetano Allen, Senator Cayetano Pia, Senator De La Rosa, Senator Ersito, Senator Estrada, Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Ontiveros, Senator Lapid, Senator Ligarda, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pimentel, Senator Poe, Senator Rivilia, Senator Tolentino, Senator Tulfo, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Cynthia, Senator Villar Mark, Senator Zebiri, the Senate President.
With twenty-one senators present, here declares the presence of a call room. Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, before we proceed with the business for the day, I'd like to acknowledge some guests present in the gallery. The guests of our minority leader, Mayor Laurie Lee Pacquiao, General Santos City; guests of Senator Lito Lapid, Councilor Kate Coseteng, former Councilor Julian Coseteng of Quezon City; Councilor Tina Perez and Mayor Perez of Agunay Bulakan; Congressman Oligario of the Second District of Sambuanga Cibugay; guests of the Senate, the LGUs from the municipality of Maluso Lamitan Basilan; board member Alan Andan of the First District of Bulakan; guests of Senator Nancy Binay incoming; senior citizens from Paranggay San Antonio Makati City; Mayor Jarvis Acosta, Mayor CI of Sambuanga City; guests of Senator Jingo Estrada; the officials and players of the SVP and the SG basketball team, Mr. Roy Vincent of Tuba Benguet; guests of Senator Alan Peter Cayetano; board member Paulo Crisostomo of the Fifth District of Cavite; GMA Cavite barangay officials, SK Chairman of Mbo City of Tagig. Guests of Senator JB Ersito, Mayor Norbert Sigunial Jr., Vice Mayor Mari Sigunial, and councilors from Santa Teresita Batangas. Guests of this representation, Mayor Amy Oligario, Attorney Richard Olig... Ah, Chu of Ipil Sambuanga Cibugay as well as the Sangunean Kabataan of Ipil Sambuanga Cibugay. We welcome the said guests to the Senate, Mr. President.
To the aforementioned guests, welcome to your Senate. Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move that we transfer from the calendar for ordinary business to the calendar for special orders committee report number three-one-nine on Senate Bill number two-eight-one-eight. This is the bill on the National Housing Authority Act. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Consideration of the aforementioned bill is now in order. Majority leader.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Bill number two-eight-one-eight under committee report number three-one-nine. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Secretary is directed to comply.
An act strengthening the National Housing Authority by extending its corporate term and rationalizing its powers, repealing Presidential Decree Number seven-five-seven, Series nineteen-seventy-five, as amended and for other purposes.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, I move to recognize Senator Amy Marcos, Chairperson of the Committee on Urban Planning, Housing, and Resettlement to deliver her sponsorship speech.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Marcos is recognized to deliver her sponsorship speech on the measure. You may proceed now.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good afternoon, esteemed colleagues in the Senate. Today I submit to this chamber committee report three-one-nine sponsoring here with Senate Bill two-eight-one-eight entitled "An Act Strengthening the National Housing Authority by Extending Its Corporate Term and Rationalizing Its Powers, Repealing for This Purpose Presidential Decree Number seven-five-seven, Series nineteen-seventy-five, as amended and for other purposes." Sabi ng Makata na si Ralph Waldo Emerson, "Ang bahay ay gawa sa mga haligi at mga biga. Ang tahanan ay likha ng pag-ibig at ng pangarap. Kundi man lang natin maibigay sa mamayang Pilipino ang haligi, biga, at sariling bubong, paano pa kaya makakamtan ang pamilyang Pilipino ang pag-ibig at kanilang pangarap sa isang tahanan? At ito ang tanning pangaragutan ng ating National Housing Authority." In November nineteen-seventy-five, my father, President Ferdinand Marcos, issued PD seven-five-seven establishing the NHA or the National Housing Authority to address the housing needs of the country. The healthy growth of our cities and towns depends on what we plan for them now. We cannot let it deteriorate further. We cannot deny any man his right to own a home. Just as it has today, the magnitude of the housing problem of the country at that time had grown and overgrown into such proportions that a purposeful, determined, organized mass housing development program became essential to respond to the need for Filipino families for a decent dwelling. Three years thereafter, Presidential Decree thirteen-ninety-six created the Ministry of Human Settlements, spearheading major housing efforts such as resettlement, slum upgrading, sites and services, core housing, medium-rise housing, and the construction of apartments and dormitories. Among its notable projects was the Tondo For Sure Development Project, Pambansang Bagon Naion, Bagon Lipunan Condo Project, and the Bagon Lipunan Improvement of Sites and Services, or the BLIS program found in many, many sites throughout the country. Hence, for the past forty-nine years, the NHA as the ministry and then the Department of Human Settlements Construction and Implementation Arm has delivered more than one-point-two million housing units in almost three thousand projects nationwide. Seven hundred thousand of these units continued to be managed by NHA while the rest of the homes were turned over to the LGUs. Until today, the NHA undertakes a full range of activities, including land acquisition, housing development, implementation of resettlement, partnering with LGUs and other government agencies, and of late with the private sector to execute these housing projects. For the past few years, it has embarked in the development of entire communities and the upgrading of informal settlements. It has also provided emergency housing assistance to poor families, pioneering in disaster resilient housing. But the dual challenges of a burgeoning young population and rapid unplanned urbanization have after fifty years increased rather than decreased the demand for affordable housing. Thus, this proposed measure, Senate Bill two-eight-one-eight, seeks to strengthen the NHA by first increasing the capitalization from five billion pesos to ten billion pesos in addition to extending its corporate term for another fifty years. The bill also seeks to expand the powers and function of the authority to cover housing operations and even support services, asset management and business development for the housing, development, and land holdings accumulated over the past few years, and management services to professionalize the government housing sector. Further, the proposed measure seeks to create a new office to be known as the Disaster and Emergency Response Housing Office to focus on calamity response and disaster housing support for hard-hit communities. The truth that the Philippines is the world's most vulnerable country to climate change has sadly been proven to us time and again. And it is the NHA that has been at the forefront of saving lives and providing even temporary shelter from these storms. The measure will also allow the NHA to implement innovative and alternative solutions in addressing the housing needs of the informal sector families, lower-income families, and the vulnerable sector, as well as housing programs for government employees, military, and uniform personnel. It shall provide the necessary resources to fulfill the NHA's expanded mandate of not only building safe and affordable houses, but homes that should, despite extreme climate, be disaster-proof. Pagkat kumbahay ang tawag natin sa istrukturang itinayo gamit ang bato at semento, tahanan naman ang tawag natin sa nabubong pamilya at pagmamahalan sa loob nito. Tahan ang salitang ugat ng tahanan. Sa Pilipino, nangangahulugan ng pagtigil o pagtahimik at pagpayapa. Halimbawa, tumahan ang ulan at tumahan din sa pagiyap ang sanggol. Sa ibang konteksto, ang ibig sabihin nito sa atin ay manirahan, sumilong. Halimbawa, sa akin kamahanan, aking irog ang sabi ng kanta. Subalit mauugat natin ang salitang tahan sa wikang bahasa sa kabila nating Indonesia na silang ating ninuno. At sa kanilang wika, ang ibig sabihin ng tahan ay kumapit, magpakatatag, magpatuloy. To withstand, to endure, to hold on against all odds, for truly, home is a shelter from storms, all sorts of storms. Kaya naman malalim ang hugot natin mga Pinoy sa salitang tahanan. Maaring ang mga dingding at mga bubong ng bahay na humaharang sa hangin. Ang sumasalo sa unos, pero ang pag-ibig sa loob ng pamamahay ang siyang tahanan. Sumasalag sa anumang hamon ng buhay. Sana ay manahan sa ating mga puso ang mensaheng ito at nawais ang ayunan ng aking mga mahal na kasamahan sa senado ang Senate Bill two-eight-one-eight sa lalong madaling panahon. Maraming salamat po sa inyong lahat.
Thank you, Senator Marcos. Um, what is the pleasure of...
Senator JB Ersito is seeking the floor.
What is the pleasure of Senator Ersito?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to deliver my cosponsorship on the measure.
The gentleman is recognized. You may proceed, sir.
Yes, Mr. President, my dear colleagues, it is an honor and privilege to cosponsor Senate Bill number two-eight-one-eight under committee report number three-one-nine. Marami pong sangkap at kasangkapan ang kailangan para makabuo ng isang bahay. Magmula sa pagpili ng lupang pagtatayuan, hanggang sa pagkalap ng mga materyales, hanggang sa pagkuha ng serbisyal na makarpintero. Nakatutuwa pong makita na mula sa wala, mabubuo at titindig ang isang estraktura na magiging tahanan ng isang pamilya. Isang lugar na matutuluyan at mauuwiyan, isang lugar ng tahinga. Malaga po ang ginagampanan ng National Housing Authority sa pagpapatayong ng housing units sa ating pinaka mahihirap na mga kababayan. Para po sa mga halos wala, nakapagbibigay po ng pag-asa ang NHA sa pamamagitan ng mga programa bahay na makatuwiran at makatao, nakabatay sa kakayahan at kadyayuan sa buhay. Ginoh Pangulo, halos pitong milyon na po ang housing backlog ng ating bansa at kung hindi po natin ito agapan, ay maripitong lumobo sa mga susunod na taon. The NHA has the, as the primary construction arm of the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, or DIHOD, plays a vital role in not only building houses, but most notably fulfilling the dreams of informal sector families who long for an affordable and decent dwelling. As one of DIHOD's key shelter agencies, the focus clientele of the NHA is the poorest of the poor. NHA serves as one of the pillars of DIHOD in providing the greatest number of houses to the greatest number of families in need of a shelter. Like any other structure, the loss of one of its columns might lead to an unstable foundation. That is why, Mr. President, dear colleagues, I appeal for the immediate passage of the proposed measure seeking to renew the corporate life of the National Housing Authority. Notwithstanding all the difficulties they have encountered in the past, I fervently hope that the NHA finds success and consider this as a rebirth of their agencies. Ginopangulo, ang NHA po ay isa sa mga sangkap na kailangan ng DIHOD para mayayos at magampanan ang kanilang tungkulin na makapagpatayo ng mga abot kaya at disenteing mga pabahay. Bigyan po natin ng pagkakataon ang NHA na magpatuloy ng makapagsilbi bilang kasangkapan sa pagpapatupad sa mga pangarap nating mga mahihirap na kababayan walang tahanan. Maraming salamat po, Ginopangulo.
Thank you, Senator Ersito. Majority leader.
Mr. President, with the indulgence of the good sponsor, Senator Amy Marcos, I respectfully seek to be designated as a cosponsor of this urgent measure, Senate Bill two-eight-one-eight.
Noted.
And, Mr. President, this representation would just like to insert into the records a copy of this sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
The manifestation of the majority floor leader is duly noted and inserted into the record.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill number two-eight-one-eight.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion approved.
Mr. President, I move that we resume consideration of Senate Bill number two-eight-two-six under committee report number three-two-nine. This is the bill enhancing the fiscal regime of the metallic mining industry. I so move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion approved.
The parliamentary status, Mr. President, is that having sponsored the measure, I move to open the period of interpolation and recognize the sponsor, Senator Joseph Victor Ersito, and to interpolate the Honorable Minority Leader, Senator Aquilino Coco Pimentel III.
Hearing no objection, period of interpolation is now in order. Senators Ersito and Pimentel are hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I think, okay, the sponsor is here, but... In our agenda, Mr. President, there are other members of the majority block who are listed also to interpolate, so maybe it's the better practice for the minority to interpolate last, Mr. President. So what is happening, Mr. President? Mr. President, we're just taking the opportunity of harnessing the preparedness and the reservoir talent of the good minority leader. That's why sometimes, Mr. President, we always recognize the minority leader because the minority leader will set ablaze the context of discussion, Mr. President.
Well, Mr. President, we prepare for all the bills, so our state of preparedness is... We try our best, but I believe those who have listed their names from the majority as being interested to interpolate, so... I think we should, this representation should give way to them first, Mr. President.
Are there any other majority members who wish to interpolate the majority leader?
I totally agree, Mr. President. Uh, are those willing to interpolate? One minute suspension, Mr. President.
Session suspended.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill number two-eight-two-six.
Is there an objection? There being none, motion approved.
Mr. President, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution number one-zero-seven-five. This is the resolution commending and congratulating the strong group Filipinas Basketball Team. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none, motion approved. Yes, can I just deliver my sponsorship speech here in the podium?
To sponsor the measure, yes, Mr. President.
This representation is honored to sponsor the proposed Senate Resolution number one-zero-seven-five, commending and congratulating Strong Group Filipinas Basketball Team for winning the championship title in the forty-third William Jones Cup Men's Event held from July thirteen to twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four in Taiwan. We Filipinos, including this representation, embraced basketball as our national pastime. Sa bawat kanto at maliit na kalsada sa buong bansa, meron pong basketball court o ko po na naglalaro nito. Para sa maraming kabataan, basketball ang unang sport na kanilang natututunan. Kaya naman po, lubos na kasiya ng dulot ng pagkapanalo ng ating mga basketball teams sa international sports competitions. Sila po ay nagbigay ng karangalan para sa ating bansa at ang kanilang tagumpay ay naging simbolo ng husay at galing ng manlalarong Pilipino. This representation wishes to congratulate Strong Group Filipinas, which is composed of the following players: Ange Kwame, Kiefer Rabiner, Renz Abando, Jordan Heding, RJ Abrientos, David Ildefonso, Gio Chu, Kailan Chongson, Alan Liwag, Tony Inot, Jonathan Manalili, DJ Fener, Chris Macollo, and Todd Juan Agi. And head coaches Charles Chu and Rajko Toroman, and assistant coach Paulo Maligalig for their successful undefeated eight-zero winning streak in the grueling nine-days Jones Cup tournament. The team management, the team managed to keep their perfect record despite at one point during the competition losing three of their players due to illness and injuries, playing against defending champions and in front of a hometown crowd. Ang kanilang pagkapanalo laban sa participating teams mula sa United Arab Emirates, Australia, Ukraine, Malaysia, Japan, Chinese Taipei, at maging ang Estados Unidos na siyang may hawak ng pinakamaraming kampyunato sa Jones Cup ay patunay na kaya natin makipagsabayan sa pinakamagaling na manlalaro sa buong mundo. Ito po ang ikapitong championship title mula sa Jones Cup para sa ating bansa. Matapos natin mapanalunan ito noong nineteen-eighty-one mula sa Northern Cement Team, nineteen-eighty-five courtesy of the San Miguel Team, noong nineteen-ninety-eight mula sa Philippine Centennial Team, noong twenty-twelve courtesy of Smart Gilas Filipinas, at noong twenty-sixteen and twenty-nineteen mula sa Mighty Sports Team. Their success secured the country's standing as a basketball powerhouse and the second-best performing team in Jones Cup history, next to the United States. Maraming salamat po, Team Philippines. Mabuhay ang atletang Pilipino. Maraming salamat po. Majority leader.
Mr. President, Senator Bongo would like to insert into the records his cosponsorship speech.
The manifestation of the majority leader with regard to the sponsorship, cosponsorship speech of Senator Bongo is hereby inserted.
Senator Joel Villanueva, Mr. President, is seeking the floor.
Senator Joel Villanueva is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Majority Leader. Just a short cosponsorship speech, if you may, Mr. President, mga kasamahan dito sa senado. Tayo po ay lubos na nagagalak na i-co-sponsor ang Senate Resolution number ten-seventy-five na nagbibigay pugay, pagbati, at parangal sa Strong Group Athletics Filipinas Basketball Team sa pagsungkit ng kampyunato sa forty-third William Jones Cup noong Julio sa Taiwan. Mr. President, as one of the millions of Filipino basketball fans and a former national team player myself, I was one of many that cheered for and prayed that Strong Group Filipinas bring home the Jones Cup crown once again. At indinga po, tayo nila binigo. The fashion and electrifying eighty-three-seventy-nine come-from-behind overtime win against Chinese Taipei Blue in their championship match that saw our country reclaiming the title which we last won in twenty-nineteen. Strong Group Filipinas also competed a sweep after being undefeated eight-zero in the tournament. They bested talented basketball players from the UAE, Australia, Ukraine, Malaysia, USA, Japan, and Taiwan. Our athletes, Mr. President, showed their heart in every single game executed, their passion and their dedication as they bring home our seventh Jones Cup title. We'd like to congratulate all the players who displayed determination and resilience as they clinched the championship for the country. Ange Kwame, Dave Ildefonso, Alan Liwag, Winston Inot, Jonathan Manalili, Renz Abando, Kiefer Rabiner, Chris Macollo, RJ Abrientos, Gio Chu, Jordan Heding, Towan Agi, Kailan Chongson, and DJ Fener. Binabati rin po natin ang coaching team na pinangungunahan ng ating head coach, ang ating kaibigan, at matagal ng kasama sa larangan ng basketball, Coach Charles Chu at Coach Rajko Toroman, at team founder, Mr. Frank Lau. Saludo po kami sa inyong lahat. Mabuhay po kayo at mabuhay ang Philippine basketball. Thank you, Mr. President, and God bless us all.
Thank you, Senator Joel. The chair would also like to recognize the presence of Mr. Jacob Lau, the manager of the Strong Group Filipinas. Welcome to the Senate. Majority leader.
Mr. President, no member wishes to interpolate or propose amendment. I move to adopt proposed Senate Resolution one-zero-seven-five, subject to style. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Yes, Resolution number ten-seventy-five is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, with the permission of the body, I move that all present members of the Senate be made co-authors of this resolution.
Duly noted.
Mr. President, may I seek a one-minute suspension to enable the members of the Philippine Basketball Team to have a picture with the major sponsor as well as the other members of the Senate?
Session suspended for a minute.
Mr. President, I move to open the period of interpolation, but this time recognize the sponsor, Senator Joseph Victor Ersito, and concurring with the sentiments of the good minority leader to recognize Senator Robin Hood Padilla of the majority group to interpolate.
Senators Padilla and Ersito are recognized.
Maraming salamat po, Ginoh Pangulo, at sa ating Pinunong Mayuria. Audo bilahimin na siyatan na regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah rabbil alamin. Mahal na Ginoh Pangulo. Sa matagal na panahon, tayo po ay dalawang taong mahigit ng pangulo o chairman ng committee ng Cultural Minorities and Muslim Affairs. Marami na po tayong nakitang mga kaso, Ginoh Pangulo, na ang ating pong mga katutubo, yung ating pong pinakamamahal na mga dugung bughao, na siyang tunay na nagmamayari na mga lupa dito sa ating inang bayang Pilipinas ay nakakaroon po ng mga pang-aabuso, ang mga mining companies. At ang ating pong gustong malinawan lamang, dito po, ay ano po ba ang estado ng mining industry dito sa ating Pilipinas? Kasi kung natandaan ko po, ako po ay, ang tatay ko po ay dating presidente ng Mining International Federation sa London, England. Siya po ang labor union, siya po ang nagtayo ng National Mines and Alec Workers Union, hanggang siya po ay pumanaw. Kaya sa madaling salita po, Ginoh Pangulo, ako po ay lumaki sa minahan. Ang pilang aral ko po ay galing sa minahan. Kami po ay binuhay ng minahan. Ngunit ang sitwansyon po ng minahan ngayon ay malayo po, Ginoh Pangulo, noong nineteen-eighties. Noong nineteen-eighties, merong benepisyo ang mga miners, may housing, merong silang pagpapaaral ng mga anak nila, kompleto. Ngayon po, ano po ba ang estado ng mining corporation po sa Pilipinas? Yung po yung mga gusto natin itanong, pangalawa, ang sabi po ng DNR, ang Pilipinas daw po, ay merong one-point-four trillion na halaga ng gold reserve. Kasama na po dyan ang copper, ang nickel, ang chromeite. Kung totoo po itong one-point-four trillion dollars, na meron po tayong tinatawag na mga mina, yung resources, eh ilang po ba, pagka ikokompete po ito, one-point-four trillion dollars, magkano po ba ang dapat ang kita ng bansa dito? Kung ito po ay itatax natin, diyan po sa panukala ng ating mahal na kasama. Yung po ang unang tanong, mahal na Ginoh Pangulo.
Ah, marami salamat no, sa ating kasamahan, ah, Robin Hood Padilla. Alam ko naman na ikaw ay talagang pagdating sa mga indigenous people, sa ating ma-IP, sa talagang iyong pagtingin, no? Ay nandun, natalo namo po natin. Sa kasalukuyang struktura ng ating pong mining industry, meron pong Department Order na nagbibigay at nag-aalat ng not less than 1% para sa mga indigenous peoples, no? So not less than 1% sa ngayon, no? Pero po sa, ito po 'yung ano, nasa Department Order na Section 16 on Ancestral Lands, no? Nandin po yun. Sa Mining Act, actually nasa IRR po ito, na not less than 1% of gross output dapat po ng mga mining companies ay ilaan po sa ating pong mga indigenous peoples o mga IPs. Pero sa ating pong, ah, bagong, ito pong Mining Fiscal Regime Bill na ating pong minumungkahi, ang ating pong proposal ay imposition of a fixed IP royalty rate at 1% or 2%. So ito po 'yung ating pong minumungkahi na gawin pong fix rate na 1% or 2%. So depende po 'yan sa ating pong mapagkakasunduan dito po sa ating pong plinario.
Opo, napakaganda po nun, Ginoong Pangulo. Dahil yaan po 'yung nasasaad po sa Aprilo, talagang 1% nga po eh. Yun nga po ang medyo nakakalungkot din pong isipin, Ginoong Pangulo. Sapagkat sa BARM, malinaw po sa BARM Law, ang makukuha ng mga bangsa moro ay nasa 5%. Pero pagdating po sa indigenous people natin, ay 1%. Yun po ang hihilingin po sana natin na maging maisa katuparan po. Yung sinasabi po na 3% po ba, ang narinig ko po, ah, ating pong, ah, Ginoong Pangulo?
Actually, dodoblehin po natin, kasi po sa kasalukuyang Department Order nasa not less than 1%. So ukala ay gagawin itong 2%, dodoblehin po natin.
Naku, malaking bagay na po 'yan, Ginoong Pangulo. Sapagkat sa ating pong experience na pagiging Chairman po ng Komite ng Cultural Minorities, abey, napakalaki po ng problema sapagkat hindi po nakakasingil 'yung ating pong mga katutubo. Pero ibang problema po 'yan, opo. Yaan po ay tatalakayin natin sa ibang panukala. Ito pong pamilyar po ba kayo sa ating pong datos ng DNR, oxalate, chromite, at iron sa halagang 132 billion? Habang ang kabuoang naman ng ating sport minerals, minerals, and...
Ito po, from 2021 po, nasa 40.19 billion. 2022 nasa 48.21 billion. 2023 ay 41.72 billion. So ito 24 dahil hindi pahutapos. So ang average po ay nasa 43.37 billion pesos po ang taxes na atin pong nakukuha mula sa mining industry.
Pesos po ito, no?
Opo, opo.
Ito po po noong 2023 po?
41.7 noong 2023.
Opo, dito po sa bagong panukala po natin, Ginoong Pangulo, tataas po ba ito?
Ah, inaasahan po natin ito'y tataas, no? Kasi nga po, nabanggit niyo kanina, no? Indeed, the Philippines is geographically endowed. Ibig sabihin ang Pilipinas ay nabiyayaan, no? Na mayaman po talagang ating pong likas na kayamanan. We are blessed with minerals, no? Nabanggit niyo 'yung copper, gold, nickel, chromite. Totoo po yun. Um, pati 'yung estimated value, no? Napakalaki from gold to nickel, 'yung mga produkto na banggit niyo kanina. Kaya lang ang problema po talaga, kaya nga po rason bakit po natin pinapasa itong, gusto natin maipasa itong panukalan ito ay ang ating pong kasalukuyang pulusiya, no? Ay hindi po, um, kaaya-aya, no? Sa mga investments sa sektor dahil nga po medyo komplikado, no? Um, siguro matatanong din po ito ng ating Minority Leader later on. Currently, there are five fiscal regimes governing the mining industry, no? Lima po 'yung ating pong sinusundan na fiscal regimes. Ang nais po natin, ah, kung maipasa po ito, ay gagawing simple na lamang, no? Single tax structure pero dalawa na lamang. Yan po ang Mineral Production Sharing Agreement or MPSA at 'yung Financial and Technical Assistance Agreement, no? Sa ating pong national government, so magiging dalawa na lang. Ang ating pong magiging, ah, pwede pong pasukan, no? Na mga sistema. So dahil po dito ay inaasahan na mas tataas po ang investments, mas marami pong papasok sa mining industry ngayon dahil po mas magiging simple na po. Dahil nga according to Fraser Institute, no? Ang Pilipinas ay pinakamalaki po ang potential, biggest mineral potential. Kaya lang po 'yung kasalukuyang pulusiya ay dahil nga po komplikado ay hindi po talagang kaaya-aya sa mga investments. So inaasahan po natin na ito po ilalago kapag naipasa po natin ito dahil mas magiging simple na po ang ating pong, um, taxation o 'yung ating pong pagclassify, no? Sa mga, sa mga mining industry.
Opo, ah, Ginoong Pangulo, ako po ay nagkaroon ng pagkakataon na makapagseminar po dati ng mining sa Sweden. Sapagkat ang Sweden po ang mining capital ng Europe at doon po ay pinalad po tayo na makapunta doon at nakita po natin sa Galibari yoong kanila pong pamamaraan ng mining. Ang gusto ko lamang pong malaman kung bakit po sa ating bansa ay hindi po state-owned ang mining. Karamihan po ng mga mining kasi sa ibang bansa ay state-owned. Alam niyo po, sa, ah, a single iron mine in Sweden, ito po ah, medyo English po ito, generates 26 billion krona or 135 billion sa isang taon. Ang kita po ng iron mines sa Sweden ay kikitain ng Pilipinas sa loob ng 33 years. Sa kasalukuyang po, merong 12 mines in production at 140 mines under exploration. Ang revenue po ng mining industry sa Sweden ay nakalaan para sa edukasyon at iba pang social services. Sa Pilipinas po, ang share na mga LGUs ay dapat gamitin sa mga local social development programs and projects. Ito po ang tanong, ano po ang inaasahan nating, ah, magiging benepisyo po natin dito kapagka ito pong batas na ito ay naipasa? Maari po ba tayong maliwanagan kung anong inaasahan po natin magiging kapakinabangan nito sa ating ekonomiya? Dahil malinaw po, malinaw po sa bansang Europa na inaasahan po nila ang mining. Napakalaki pong kontribusyon ng mining sa kanilang ekonomiya. At ito po ay sinasagawa po nila ng, siyempre po, una sa lahat ay standard ng International Labor Organization para po doon sa mga minero. At siyempre po, para po naman sa kalikasan, ito po ay talagang bantay sarado ng European countries, ano? Lalo na po ang mga Scandinavian countries, masado po sila talagang maingat sa magiging epekto ng mining. So dito po sa Pilipinas, hindi na nga po tayo state-owned. Ito po ay binibigay natin sa mga private. Paano po kaya? Ito po kayang batas na ito ay makikinabang na po ang taong bayan dito? Sa batas na ito, ah, Ginoong Pangulo, ito po ba'y sigurado na na ang ating mga kababayan po ay katulad po dito sa Sweden, ano? Nakalaan para sa edukasyon at social services. Opo, yun po ang gusto natin maitanong kung saan po ba? Saan po ba ilalaan ng gobyerno itong pagnaipasa itong panukala nito at magkaroon po ng panibagong taxation? Saan po kaya ito ilalaan ng gobyerno? Ito pong makukuha natin dito, Ginoong Pangulo.
Ay, marami salamat sa inyong katanungan. Um, ang pagkakaiba kasi po 'yung sa Sweden, sa kanila po ay iron ore, no? Ito talagang minimina. Yung dito po sa atin sa Pilipinas ay iron sand, no? Ito po 'yung black sand mining. Kaya nga hindi masyado natin iniencourage kasi po 'yung environmental impact nito sa ating coastlines ay medyo makakasira, no? So yun ang pagkakaiba, no? Sa atin po iron sand, suminomagnet lang, pero po itong sa Sweden ay iron ore na 'yung kalaki, ito 'yung talaga pong minimina. Doon naman po sa pangalawang inyong pong concern, doon sa magiging epekto ng pagkakapasa po nito, um, nabanggit na namin 'yung figures kanina na nag-aaverage po ng 43 billion ang taxes o ang atin pong nakukulekta mula sa mining industry. Sa pagkapasa po nito, no? By 2025 ay, um, ang ating estimate ay 5.81 billion, 2026 6.1 billion. Hanggang 2028 po na 6.73 billion, so on average so 6.26 billion ang inaasahan in, ah, na mai, ah, re-race po natin, no? Ang revenue impact po ng ating mga proposal na ito ay 6.26 billion hanggang po 2028. Ibig, ang ano pa na ito ay, Ginoong Pangulo, ay incremental revenues to. Ibig sabihin wala hong new investments. Ito po ay mga present mining firms, mining corporations, pero dahil sa magiging pagbabago at sa pagkakasimp, pagiging simple ng struktura ng, ah, dahil po dito sa ating pong Mining Act, 'yung Fiscal Improvement of the Fiscal Regime of the Metallic Mining Act ay inaasahan po na umakyat ng 6 billion kada taon ang incremental revenues, Ginoong Pangulo.
Opo, ah, Ginoong Pangulo, tanong ko lang po, 'yung pong iron ore ng Sweden, ang sinasabi po natin 'yung iron sand natin ay inferior po?
Inferior?
Hindi naman po, ah, ibig sabihin ngangahulugan na ito'y inferior. Kaya lang po ay sabi na ating mga kasamahan, ay, ah, ito po ay magiging problematic dahil nga po sa magiging epekto nito sa ating coastal areas, no? Masisira ang ating pong coastal areas at 'yung impact po nito, especially in the, ah, sa ating ekosystem at sa mga environment, coast, ah, coast, along the coast. Eh talaga hong, ah, magiging, ah, masisira po talaga, no? Matindi, kaya nga po hindi na, hindi ito masyadong itinitulak at hindi ito iniencourage, no? Ng ating pong mining industry, pero, Ginoong Pangulo.
Ah, Ginoong Pangulo, ito pong pinag-uusapan natin ay kasama po pati copper, nickel, chromite. Ilan po ba copper, nickel, chromite, at iron sand kung meron po?
Ginoong Pangulo, ito po 'yung summary naman operating metallic mines from 2021 to 2024. Ang total ay, um, 59, no?
89 po, 89?
59.
Ah, 59, opo. Lahat po ito ay local o may kapartner po itong foreign?
May ilang partner na foreign pero karamihan po rito ay local, no? Dahil 'yung pong sa FDA na tinatawag, 'yung pong papaya, kung saan pinapayagan po ang foreign, ah, 100% foreign ownership. Kakauti lang ho yun eh, wala pang apat lang ho ang pinaaga. Pero dalawa lang operating, so dalawa lang operating. So karamihan po rito ay talagang local, no? Ito po 'yung ano, no? Sa copper po ay tatlo lamang po ang operating sa gold, labindalawa, chromite, apat. Ang nickel ang pinakamarami, 36 at as of 2023. Ang iron po ay apat lang din, so a total of 59 operating metallic mine, ah, projects sa ngayon, no? Ang me-commercial operations sa kasalukuyan.
Opo, ito pong lahat ng nabanggit niyo po, ito po lahat ay 'yung tinatawag po nating sumusunod sa mining law?
Ah, maipasa itong, ah, Enhanced Fiscal Regime for Large Scale Metallic Mining Act para nga po ma-update na rin po dahil magtatatlong punta unang, no? Yung, ah, Mining Act of 1995 para din po maging ano na, ah, maging updated na rin po sa current, ah, um, market, no? International market ng ating pong mining industry.
Ah, ibig sabihin po, Ginoong Pangulo, ito pong lahat ng ito ay nasa ilo. Nasa ilalim po lahat ng ilo ito, 'yung labor po nila, labor condition?
Yes, ah, Ginoong Pangulo, dahil para po sila ipayagan pong mag-operate, they have to be in compliance with the International Labor Organization or ILO, no? Hindi po pwedeng may violation, otherwise sila po ay, ah, kung meron ay kinakailangan na, ah, kundi man magmultay, kinakailangan ma-suspend o ma, o masara kung talagang hindi po sila tumugon doon sa requirement ng ILO.
Noong, ah, panahon po ng tatay ko, ang pangalan po nun eh Mining International Federation. So ibig pong sabihin tayo po hanggang ngayon ay member po niyan. Ito pong mga min, ito pong mga minahan na nabanggit, ito po ba eh? Miners International, opo, Federation?
Ginoong Pangulo, ay, ah, according to our resource persons, ah, karamihan po ng operating mine, mining companies ay under po ng Chamber of Mines of the Philippines. So yun lang po ang kanila pong kinasasamaan.
Okay po, ah, Ginoong Pangulo, siguro yun lang muna po ang first part ng aming interpolation at makikipagugnayan din po kami sa upisina po uli ni, ah, Senator Hersito. Marami salamat po, Ginoong Pangulo.
Marami salamat, Senator Robin Hood Padilla.
President, ah, the minority leader is seeking the floor to interpolate likewise after the suspension of the interpolation of Senator Robin Hood Padilla.
The minority floor leader, Senator Pimentel, is recognized to interpolate.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just want to take advantage of the fact that the resource persons are here, Mr. President.
Yes, ah, thank you, our minority leader. Actually, I would just like to name them because you might ask for them. Um, we are led by Assistant Secretary Carlo Adriano of the Department of Finance who's incidentally celebrating his birthday. Dapat nakalip siya ngayon, but I asked him, I requested him to come because I know that he will be, your schedule to interpolate, Your Honor. Attorney Ron Rekidoro, Chamber of Mines of the Philippines. Mister Romeo Machoko, Phillips Mining. Attorney Edgar Alan Reyes of the BIR. Attorney Tobias Gavin Arsilia of the BIR. Attorney Francis Joseph of Phillips Mining and Attorney Axel Tumulak, Your Honor. So we are head, the DOF and the BIR and the Chamber of Mines are well represented this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if I may proceed with the permission of our sponsor. Sige po, ah, Mr. President, we are amending the A section in the NIRC, right? Not, not the Mining Act?
Ah, that is correct, Your Honor.
Okay, pero kasi in the previous interpolation, there was a comment that the Mining Act is already an old law and may be in need of updating also? Tama po ba 'yan?
Ah, yes, Your Honor, it's a 30-year-old law, so probably after we pass this, we can probably...
Ah yes, Your Honor, it's a thirty-year-old law, so probably after we pass this, we can probably look into um the amendment to the Mining Act of nineteen-ninety-five, just to just to keep it updated.
So 'yung sa section, anong section ng NIRC po ba ang ano? Section one fifty-one of the is it of the NIRC, 'yan po 'yung ah 'yan po 'yung main provision of law that we are touching in this measure, tama po ba yan?
Yes, Your Honor.
Sige po, ah so ano po ba ang ano dun, ano po ba ang ah tax for mining companies po dun? Ano ba masasabi natin masyadong masyadong magulo o masyadong mababa that we believe that it's not a fair return for for the state, Mr. President?
Your Honor, Mr. President, um according to our resource person, ah Seka Adriano, that in the mining code, um this already included, no? There there are certain parts, ah their provisions, they're already on taxation but we are, we we intend to put all together in this ah in this bill, no? Ah and ah just to put it in the tax code, Your Honor, Mr. President. And ah sab- kanina nasabi niyo, no? That ah ano bang problema rito, magulo? Yes, ah Your Honor, as I mentioned the earlier in the earlier interpretation that ah the Philippine mining industry has a very big potential, no? Considering that ah we are geographically endowed with abundant mineral but the problem is that our current policies do not encourage investments kasi nga po medyo complicated. At present, there are five fiscal regimes governing the mining industry namely the Mineral Production Sharing Agreement or the MPSA, the MPSA in ancestral domain, number two, number three, the MPSA in ancestral domain and in mineral reservation, number four, the Financial and Technical Assistance Agreement or the FTAA, and number five, the FTAA in ancestral domain with cost recovery. So lima po, no? Ah at present, 'yung fiscal regimes that is governing the mining industry. So we are hoping to make it to simplify and ah magkaroon na lang po ng dalawa, no? Na 'yung Mineral Product Production Sharing Agreement, MPSA and Financial Technical Assistance Agreement or FTAA.
So 'yung limang ah mineral ah ano ba tawag dun, kinds agreements, no?
Fiscal regimes.
Ah mineral fiscal regimes, may kanya-kanyang rules yun, 'yung lima. Now, now under our measure, ah magkakaroon ng dalaw- we will recognize two mining regimes. One for MPSA and another one for FTAA, tama po ba yun?
Yes, that is correct, Your Honor. We will just have two regimes. Eh but the 'yung pinaka-base taxation, Your Honor, Mr. President, is the MPSA.
What does that mean, Mr. President? Pinaka-base na taxation?
Your Honor, Mr. President, according to Seka Adriano, that ah once we, this is passed, all the they will just pay all the national taxes, no? Like the corporate income tax, excise tax, the royalties, and the windfall profit, no? That we are introducing in this measure, Your Honor. Now this is something, this is the probably an innovation and that this is the new thing that we will be introducing, the windfall profit, Mr. President.
Okay, ah so, Mr. President, ganito, para mas maintindihan natin, 'yung ah fiscal regimes na lima, we collapsed into two. But the kinds of taxes that the the mining companies and operate operations will pay basically, si corporate income tax, existing naman yan, di ba? Si excise tax, hindi po ba existing na rin po yan?
Existing, yes.
Si royalties, hindi po ba existing na yan? So, so, so actually, hindi tayo, hindi natin sinimplify in the number of taxes. Nagdagdag pa tayo ng isang concept, the windfall profit tax, tama po ba yun, Mr. President?
Yes, Your Honor, ah you're correct, 'yung po 'yung bagong po natin, that's a new feature that will be including the windfall profit tax. And also, um we added the royalties outside mineral reservation, Your Honor, so dalawa po.
So the royalties now, now the royalties are are collected only from within mineral reservations.
That is correct, Your Honor.
So sa tingin natin, teka muna, lugi tayo because there are mining activities outside mineral reservation, so we now collect royalties. So what by, what is the rule now on mining operations outside mineral reservations? If kung walang royalties, anong anong meron?
Your Honor, Mr. President, ah they would, they ah they pay no royalty but only excise tax, Your Honor, on minerals.
Can we, can we be educated, Mr. President, ah by differentiating what is this excise tax and what is this royalty, Mr. President? So ibig sabihin, as from the answer of the sponsor, ibig sabihin on if there's a mining operation outside the mineral reservation, there is actually no royalty but we pay excise, they pay excise tax on their output? Parang ganun yata yun eh, on a per metric ton ata ang excise tax? Ganun ba yun? So new feature yun?
Your Honor, I am regarding your query, no? The definition of royalty and the excise. Um the Philippine Mine of nineteen-ninety does not provide a specific definition of royalty. However, based on the context, in that order, it can be inferred that royalties are payments made to the government as compensation for the extraction of mineral resources. So these payments are typically calculated as a percentage of the total income generated from the sale of minerals. The excise tax is considered as the total share of the government from the extraction of the mineral. This is ah um in chap, ah sorry, in section eighty, no? So
So, so matagal na lang?
It's the total share. Says again, section eighty, the excise tax is considered as the total share of the government from the extraction of the mineral. However, the common definition of an excise tax is a tax levied on a specific good or service wherein the consumption of this good or service produces negative externalities. Some of such goods that impose negative are cigarettes, alcohol, sweetened beverage, and the like, Your Honor.
Ba't nasama natin ang ang mineral extraction na, Mr. President? Because of its disruption of the natural state of things, Mr. President? Ganun siguro, environmental disturbance?
Yes, ah because of its effect on our environment, Your Honor, Mr. President.
So thank you for that, Mr. President, at maganda, so may mga bago, may mga bago. Ah na-realize ng estado, nateka muna, parang parang lugi tayo, mas konti ang nakukuha natin, lalo siguro. Ah si Senator Robin Padilla kanina, may mention niya 'yung Sweden pero hindi ko po namonitor kung magkano 'yung mga effective tax rates nila sa Sweden pero so yun po yun, no? So we simplified the tax regimes into two. We expanded the royalty payments to include with outside of mineral reservations. We are introducing windfall profit tax concept. How about CIT? Are we touching the rate? Any any change in the CIT, corporate income tax?
Ah no, Your Honor, Mr. President, we are not, the same.
Ah and I think mining companies are taxed at twenty percent? Twenty?
Twenty-five percent, Your Honor.
Twenty-five percent?
Large-scale mining, Your Honor, Mr. President, is about twenty-five percent.
See, ah ang corporate income tax, normally na lang, normally of our mining companies, ah ang rate niya is twenty-five percent, tama?
That is correct, Your Honor, twenty-five percent.
Wala ba silang benefit sa create law, Mr. President? Sa mga SIPP, di sila, wala?
Your Honor, um they are not being given incentives, no? In the extraction, only in profit? And ah only, sorry, only in processing?
Yes, ang atibang mga mining companies, ah they have two balance sheets, they they are two entities when they are taxed, when they pay corporate income tax, dalawa? Or joint yun, isang operation lang po yun?
Your Honor, Mr. President, there is an attribution of ah cost, no? And revenues and the only thing, the only um activity that that gets incentive is processing, Your Honor, so yung, ang makakuha lang po 'yung processing.
Kaya nga, do mining companies nga organize separate companies for processing para iba- ibang taxing ano nila? Is that the practice?
Yes, Your Honor, you're correct, some mining companies.
To take advantage of the, you know, ah so of the processing
Have to.
Can possibly fall under, create more sa SIPP, the tier three, ganun? Then possibly ang corporate income tax rate niya is twenty percent, ganun po ba?
Processing is two, Your Honor.
Tier two?
Tier two.
Kaya pero the corporate income tax rate ba dun is twenty percent, ganun po ba?
Your Honor, Mr. President, it depends on the regime, but um with an enhanced deduction regime, it under create more, it will be about twenty percent, Your Honor, Mr. President. Twenty percent under create more. Otherwise, it will be, the normal is twenty-five percent.
Sige po, basta ang ang information po natin ngayon na nakukuha is pagdating sa corporate income tax rate for our mining companies, there is no big change in this measure.
Yes, that is correct.
Pagdating po sa excise taxes imposed on mineral products, meron po bang pagbabago? Dito po sa ating panukalang batas?
Your Honor, Mr. President, ah according our ah our support staff, it's only the same?
Same din, okay.
It's four percent, Your Honor.
Parang depending on the type of mineral ata, if certain mineral, four percent of ah
Four percent of gross output, Your Honor.
Ah it's all all minerals, all type of metallic minerals?
Yes, Your Honor, you respect the type, all minerals.
So thank you for that, Mr. President, and then, okay, so any other? Kasi maganda na po ito na na we have identified four types of ah tawagin na lang na lang natin taxes ito, any other? Ah any other tax applicable on metallic mining which is ah existing and or new under the the bill?
Well, Your Honor, it's ah as I mentioned earlier, it's the windfall tax and ah 'yung pong royalty outside.
Oh, okay na po yun, so yun lang po ang main ano natin, para ma-inform po tayo. Ngayon, ah okay, since we have, we are now going to limit the tax regimes to two, MPSA and FTAA. Which of these four taxes are are relevant to MPSA and which are relevant to FTAA?
Your Honor, Mr. President, um according to the DOF, all all taxes are relevant, no? To the two ah system, to the two fiscal regimes that we will be, that we are currently proposing, Your Honor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And then, ah can we differentiate, Mr. President, the MPSA from FTAA? So dalawa na lang 'yung fiscal regimes, so two.
Mr. President, ah an MPSA or the Mineral Processing, Mineral Processing Sharing Agreement is a type of agreement whereby the government grants the contractor the exclusive right to conduct mining operations. So see the main difference, ang MPSA, the contractor should at least be sixty percent Filipino-owned, no? Um 'yung FTA, meanwhile, the Financial Technical Assistance Agreement may be entered between a contractor and the government for the large-scale exploration, development, utilization of the mines. But in contrast to the MPSA, FTA allows one hundred percent participation with the foreign contractor providing all financial, technical, and entrepreneurial resources. And FTAA requires the approval of the President of the Republic, Your Honor.
So halos ano lang po, ano, ah both are mining operations, mas ah the ah normally, FTAA should be larger than the MPSA because we need to we need foreign capitalization and then the final approving authority is the President, ganun po? Ganun po, ganun po, but basically, they're both mining.
Your Honor, Mr. President, for FTA, ah the minimum capitalization is larger. The minimum is about five hundred million and they have and they have a larger um area, um
May we have an idea on more or less, ano 'yung mga grants?
Pero 'yung area wala na, hindi na, hindi sinabi natin.
Hindi.
Hindi ba?
For MR, 'yung mineral reservation, this time outside na, dinagdagan na.
So, more of the capital.
More of the capitalization.
Sabi niya dito, if, but when there is no profit.
81,000? Mr. President, a mini-suspension.
Such as suspended for a minute?
Yes, Mr. President, regarding the query of the minority leader, FTAA, 'yung minimum kanina, that we discussed, is about 81,000 hectares for FTAA and they are engaged in more difficult mining projects. For example, deep-seated mining sites, so 'yung two kilometers underground which needs large capitalization, that's why the minimum requirement is 500 million for FTAA, which most, itong mga difficult mining projects which most domestic mining companies cannot undertake. So yun po 'yung for FTAA. And then, for, the main difference for MPSA and FTAA, the government has a with FTAA, the government has a minimum government share of 50%, 'yung minimum. FTAA. So for example, kung 46% lang, ang share, the entity has to, may top-up. Kailangan po niya puno in ng 4% para maging 50%. So minimum guaranteed na po 'yung 50% government share, Your Honor, with FTAA.
So 'yung 50% government share, that's in the form of royalty, diba?
All taxes paid, Your Honor, Mr. President.
In lieu of, in lieu of all taxes? What is it? Ah, may we know na lang the legal basis for that minimum government share of 50% in FTAs, Mr. President? Sige pa, para masilip din po namin, what would be our legal basis in saying this, Mr. President?
We're just checking, Your Honor, Mr. President, but initially, according to, it's a it's a department order, Your Honor, Mr. President.
Sige po, DENR, Department Order?
DENR, Department Order.
Sige pa, sige po, we will just await the specifics from the sponsor. And then, in the meantime, Mr. President, we will be requesting some studies and papers from our sponsor or through our sponsor, from our resource persons, so that during the break, we can put the break into good use, Mr. President. For example, we will write this down, Mr. President. If we can ask the DOF to model the current effective tax rate given that we will be lowering the corporate income tax to 20% and the create more. Check, check na lang natin if I'm really correct, kasi nag 'yung, ang analysis namin, magti-20% sa create more eh. So, tingnan na lang po natin, you can indicate in your paper naman if I'm mistaken. And then, if we can request for a paper on the global practices in terms of taxation with respect to the processing of minerals. Iba to, diba? Kasi ito, parang extraction ito, we're talking about taxing the extraction eh.
That is correct.
Let us not forget also the processing. And then, if we could request for a copy of the Mining Interagency Coordinating Council reports evaluating the different mining operations in the country, including the BARM. Does the DOF resource person confirm that there is such a report? Meron? Can you know, it's an interagency coordinating council, sino may hawak po nito?
Your Honor, Asik Adria said that he's not sure if it's already out, but he knows that there is a draft already regarding BARM, Your Honor. But it's not, he's not sure if it's out already or official.
Sige po, as soon as possible, kasi we just want to take advantage of the break. Para hindi sa'yo 'yung break natin, so pagbalik po natin, we are better prepared and we better understand the measure. So with that, Mr. President, with the permission of our sponsor, if we could suspend our interpolation until we come back from our October break, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, we'd like to thank the Mr. President, like to thank the minority leader.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill Number 2826.
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. President, I seek a one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
President, I move that we proceed with the reference of business.
Secretary, please read the reference of business.
Message from the House, message from the House informing the Senate that on 4 September 2024, it passed the following House bills in which it requires the concurrence of the Senate. House Number 10730, providing for the modernization of the Philippine Institute of Volcanology and Seismology and appropriating funds therefore.
Science and Technology, Vision, Means and Finance.
House Number 10773, converting the extension office of the LTO in Sanchez Mira, Cagayan into a regular district office and appropriating funds therefore. House Number 10774, upgrading the classification of the Partido District Office of the LTO in Tigaon, Camarinesur, from Class D to Class C appropriating funds therefore. 10775, converting the extension office of the LTO in Bayambang, Pangasinan into a Class C district office appropriating funds therefore. 10776, converting the extension office of the LTO in Rodriguez, Montalban, Province of Rizal into a district office, to be known as the LTO Montalban District Office appropriating funds therefore. 10777, upgrading the district office of the LTO in Lawag City, Ilocos Norte into a Class A district office appropriating funds therefore. 10778, upgrading the district office of the LTO in Agoo, La Unión, from Class C to Class B and appropriating funds therefore. 10779, establishing an extension office of the LTO in San Pasqual, Batangas appropriating funds therefore. 10780, upgrading the offices of the LTO in Baguio City by converting the LTO district office into a Class A district office and the LTO Licensing Center into a regular Class B, providing provisions, positions there to appropriating funds therefore. 10781, converting the LTO extension office in Buu, Zamboanga Cibugay into a regular LTO district office appropriating funds therefore. 10782, upgrading the district office of the LTO in Ligao City, Albay from Class D to Class A appropriating funds therefore. 10783, establishing an LTFRB office in Olongapo, Province of Zambales appropriating funds therefore. 10784, upgrading the district office of the LTO in Alaminos, Pangasinan from Class D to Class B appropriating funds therefore. 10785, converting the satellite office of the LTO in San Jacinto, Tikau Island, Province of Masbate into a regular district office appropriating funds therefore.
Public Services and Finance.
House Number 10764, naming the road commencing from Barangay San Juan at the Ormooc City Diversion Road traversing Barangay San Juan, LaO, and Naungan until it adjoins the Naungan Coastal Road in the city of Ormooc, Leyte as the Dominador Gomis Diversion Road.
Public Works.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 4 September 2024, it ratified the Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 6574 and Senate Number 2200 on the Act Promoting Mental Health and Well-being Basic Education by Institutionalized and School-Based Mental Health Programs, establishing care centers, prescribing the creation of new plantillas positions of mental health specialists and mental health association in the Department of Education appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 4 September 2024, it concurred with the Senate amendments to the following House bills, House Number 9335, 9623, 9624, and House Number 8426.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it designated Representatives Gomer, Cadre, Villia, Roque, and Bordado Jr. as conferents of the Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 7400, 6523, and Senate Number 2587 on strengthening the enterprise-based education and test-training framework and appropriating funds therefore.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it designated Representatives Singh, Son, Mihan, Val, Mayor Jr., Alvarez, Alceda, Mercado, Villia, Veloso, Tuason, and Dasa as conferents of the Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 9662 and Senate Number 2450, establishing a framework for blue economy, promoting stewardship and sustainable development of coastal and marine ecosystems and resources.
Rules.
Rules. Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it designated Representatives Goh, Ecleno, Roque, and Maxino as conferents to the Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 9978 and Senate Number 1864, providing for a moratorium on the payment of student loans during disasters and other emergencies.
Rules.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it adopted Senate Number 2690 as an amendment to House Number 7986, declaring August 1 of every year a special working holiday to be known as the promulgation of the solemn Declaration of Philippine Independence.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it designated Representatives Alceda, Swan Singh, Haresco Jr., Lagon, Vergara, Reyes, Kimbo, Kuwakus Jr., and Lagor as conferents of the Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 9794 and Senate Number 2762, amending sections 27, 28, 32, 34, 57, 106, 108, 109, 112, 135, 237, 237A, 292, 293, 294, 295, 296, 297, 300, 301, 308, 309, 310, 311, and adding new sections 135A, 295A, and 296A of the National Internal Revenue Code as amended and for other purposes.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 9 September 2024, it ratified the Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 9034 and Senate Number 2665, authorizing the President of Philippines to establish archipelagic sea lanes, prescribing the obligations of foreign ships and aircraft exercising archipelagic sea lanes passage through the designated archipelagic sea lanes and other purposes.
Archives.
Additional reference of business, Senate Number 2835, enact mandating the establishment of a population development office in all provinces, cities, and municipalities amending for the purpose section 48A of RA 7160 as amended introduced by Senator Lapid.
Local Government.
2836, strengthening the governance and management of the Philippine Science High School system and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Lapid.
Science and Technology, Vision, Means and Finance.
Resolutions, proposal Resolution 1206 congratulating and commending Senator Pia S. Cayatano and Padal Pilipinas for winning the group stage championship and the overall silver medal in the Asia-Pacific Padal Cup held on 19 to 22 September 2024 in Bali, Indonesia, Senator Escudero.
Rules.
1207, congratulating and commending the Philippine Women's Chess Team for winning at the 45th Fida Chess Olympiad held in Budapest, Hungary in September 22, 2024, Senator Lapid.
Rules.
Committee Report, Committee Report 331 jointly by the Committees on Government, Corporations, and Public Enterprises and Energy of Senate Number 2837, with Senators Anhersito, Tulfo, Villar M., and Cayatano P. as authors, enact extending the corporate term of the Power Sector Assets and Liabilities Management Corporation amending section 50 of Republic Act Number 19136, otherwise known as the Electric Power Industry Reform Act of 2001, recommending this approval in substitution of Senate Numbers 1975, 2580, and 2757, sponsors Senator Villar M.
Ordinary Business.
Second additional reference of business, messages from the House. Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 10 September 2024, it passed the following House bills in which it requests the concurrence of the Senate. House Number 10805, converting the extension campus of the Southern Luzon State University in Gumakan, Quezon into a regular campus and appropriating funds therefore.
Higher Technical and Vocational Education Finance.
House Number 10820, converting the Southern Philippines Agribusiness and Marine Aquatic School of Technology in Malita, Dava Occidental into a state university and appropriating funds therefore.
Higher Technical and Vocational Education, Vision, Means and Finance.
10822, converting the Gimara State University, Mosqueda, and Batera Extension Campuses in the Municipality of Jordan and San Lorenzo respectively, both in Gimara into regular campuses and appropriating funds therefore.
Higher Technical and Vocational Education and Finance.
10772, improving the delivery of socialized housing programs amending for the purpose sections 10, 18, and 20 of RA 7279 as amended by RA 10884, otherwise known as the Balanced Housing Development Program Amendments.
Urban Planning Housing and Resettlement, Vision, Means.
House Number 10804, enact granting Philippine citizenship to job-caleracal women.
Justice and Human Rights.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 11 September 2024, it designated Representatives Anvergas, Swan Singh, Cruz Jr., Violago, Panaligan, Estrella, Kimbo, Imano, and Lee as conferents of the Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 10381 and Senate Number 2779, amending RA 8178 or the Agricultural Terrification Act as amended by RA 11203.
Rules.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 10 September 2024, it ratified the Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 9794 and Senate Number 2762, amending sections 27, 28, 32, 34, 57, 106, 108, 109, 112, 135, 237, 237A, 292, 297, 300, 301, 308, 309, 310, and 311, and adding new sections 135A, 295A, and 296A of the National Internal Revenue Code as amended and for other purposes.
Archives.
Letter from the House informing the Senate that on 10 September 2024, it ratified the Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Number 7400, House Number 6523, and Senate Number 2587, enact strengthening the enterprise-based education and training framework and appropriating funds therefore.
Archives. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that we transfer from the calendar for ordinary business to the calendar for special orders, Committee Report Number 331 on Senate Bill Number 2837. This is the bill extending the corporate term of the Power Sector Assets and Liabilities Management Corporation, and so on, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Bill Number 2837 under Committee Report Number 331.
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Consideration of Senate Bill 2837 is now in order. The secretary will read only the title of the bill without prejudice to inserting into the record the whole text thereof.
Enact extending the corporate term of the Power Sector Assets and Liabilities Management Corporation amending for the purpose section 50 of RA 9136, otherwise known as the Electric Power Industry Reform Act of 2001.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move to recognize Senator Mark Villar, Chairman of the Committee on Government Corporations and Public Enterprises to deliver the sponsorship speech.
Senator Mark Villar is recognized, but may I know, Mr. Majority Leader, why are there so many media here inside the gallows? Is there any fireworks that's going to happen? Anyway, please proceed, Senator Mark.
I guess exciting pala itong Pisam bill natin. Anyway, Mr. President, dear colleagues, I stand before you to seek your support for the extension of the corporate life of the Power Sector Asset and Liabilities Management, or PISAM. PISAM was created in 2001 through the Epiro Law, which was essentially enacted to restructure the power sector previously monopolized by the National Power Corporation, or NPC. PISAM was entrusted to formulate and implement a privatization plan for the government's energy assets previously held by the NPC. The corporation also took over the ownership of all exciting NPC generation assets, liabilities, independent power producers, or IPP contracts, real estate, and all other disposable assets. Additionally, PISAM was also mandated to manage the orderly sale, disposition, and privatization of these assets with the objective of liquidating all NPC financial obligations and stranded contract costs. all NPC financial obligations and stranded contract costs. For the past 22 years, PISAM has been fulfilling its mandate enshrined in the EPIRA. PISAM's wealth of experience and knowledge gained throughout its 22 years of experience serves to operationalize the policies and provisions enshrined in the EPIRA. As of December 2023, PISAM substantially reduced its financial obligations by 76%, or from 1.2 trillion pesos to 294 billion pesos. PISAM likewise remitted to the Bureau of Treasury around 26 billion pesos as dividends to the national government. PISAM is at a crucial point where the wheel has to continue spinning for the corporation to fully achieve its mandate contemplated under EPIRA. That is why, Mr. President, I'm asking for your support in extending PISAM's corporate life for another 25 years to give them sufficient time to settle existing obligations. This would also enable PISAM to commence asset and management plans for several significant independent power producers, facilities and real estate assets. Nonrenewal of PISAM's corporate life entails management of financial obligations that necessitate funding of the projected deficit of 275 billion pesos. Should it be untimely abolished, the national government would have to absorb all of PISAM's outstanding financial obligations. Sasaluhin po ng national government ang mga obligasyon ng PISAM kung hindi makakaroon na extension ng kanilang corporate life. This means that funding for critical development projects would have to be reallocated to avoid potential legal issues should PISAM be submitted, substitute should PISAM be substituted by another party. Maraming development and crucial socioeconomic projects ang maaapektuhan ng mawawalang 275 billion pesos. Magiging inefficient rin po ang operations dahil sa ibat-ibang institutional constraints and functions which PISAM has taken the helm since their inception. Makakaroon ng malaking domino effect sa pondong ng gobyerno kung hindi mabibigyan ng sapat na panahon ang PISAM to settle all of their remaining obligations. Before I end, I would like to extend my warmest gratitude to our dear colleagues who helped in the crafting of this bill, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Senator JV Ehersito and Senator Pia Caitano. Mr. President, together with the co-authors of this bill, I am earnestly seeking the support of this August chamber for its passing. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Mark.
Mr. Majority Leader. I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill number 2837.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
President, I seek a one-minute suspension, Mr. President.
So suspended.
Mr. President,
Majority Leader.
I move that we resume consideration of Senate Bill number 2793 under committee report number 304. This is the bill on the Philippine Natural Gas Industry Development Act.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
I move to resume the period of interpolation and recognize the sponsor, Senator Pia Caitano, and to continue with, to start with her interpolation, Deputy Minority Leader, Senator Rizante Verros.
Senators Pia Caitano and Rizante Verros are hereby recognized.
Thank you. Before her honor starts her interpolation, the body will recall yesterday, Senator Sherwin had a long manifestation. If I may just address that first, so her honor can take a seat. It won't be that long, but it's long enough that she may want to take her seat.
Certainly, Mr. President, and thank you, good gentlewoman from Taguig and Pateros.
Thank you. Mr. President, as mentioned yesterday, I wish to address the concerns raised by esteemed colleague, former Chairperson of the Committee on Energy, Senator Sherwin Gachalian, regarding the Philippine Natural Gas Industry Development Bill that I am currently sponsoring. This bill aims to develop the natural gas industry, which is critical to energy security, by revitalizing indigenous gas exploration, giving importance to the country's own gas supply and developing liquid natural gas infrastructures as well. Mr. President, this measure will benefit both investors in indigenous natural gas and imported natural gas, and of course, the Filipino people. Contrary to yesterday's manifestation by the gentleman from Venezuela, we are not leaving the entire supply of natural gas in the hands of one entity. All interested parties are welcome to participate. That is precisely why we are developing the industry. It is a sad, sad state we are in right now. From 150 wells in the 1970s, there have been no additional drilling efforts since 2019. Are we going to let this industry die? Are we going to be dependent on imported natural gas? As I repeatedly stated during the period of interpolation, this is not about indigenous gas versus imported LNG. We will need both indigenous natural gas and imported LNG and even other sources of fuel to sustain our energy needs. Mr. President, I'd like to emphasize that prioritizing our own gas resources is necessary for our country's energy security. This is a no-brainer. Saan ka naman nakakita ng bansa na inuna pa ang imported? Umasa na lang sa imported, bagamat meron naman sariling supply? Let us not allow our failure in the agricultural sector to happen in the energy sector. Let's take a moment and think about that. If we want indigenous to be cheaper, let's create an environment that will encourage competition, encourage the development of indigenous gas. Also, indigenous gas is owned by the Filipino people. We already went through this many times during this period of interpolation. 60% of the net proceeds from indigenous gas go back to the government. Simply put, it's Filipino gas for the Filipino people. We must support the growth of natural gas, which includes imported gas. This is what is provided for in the bill. On another note, natural gas will likewise serve as our transition fuel to renewable energy, which is part of the Philippine Energy Plan. Until new technologies for energy storage are available, we will need a more flexible and cleaner baseload as compared to coal. This is our transition fuel, this is our transition plan. We cannot rely on coal, we should not rely on coal. The DOE shall establish mechanisms for the optimal and full utilization of indigenous natural gas in the generation, transmission, distribution and supply of power, subject to standards and limitations consistent with the state policy of ensuring energy security and consumer welfare. This is written in the bill, Mr. President. Let's take a stand. Prioritize indigenous, support indigenous and buy indigenous. It ensures a continuous and stable energy supply in the country even or despite unpredictable events occurring in the global market. With that, Mr. President, I am ready for the interpolation of our Deputy Minor floor leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pia. Senator Riza, you're on the floor.
Salamat, Mr. President, and dear gentlewoman from Taguig and Pateros. I just hope that you will be able to pagbigyan niyo 'yung aking mga tanong sa bill natin ngayong araw.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. We are ready and we'll do our best to answer the questions of her honor.
Thank you, good gentlewoman. My interpolation is in three parts, and at any point that the good gentlewoman would prefer that I suspend, I may do so, but I'll do it part by part in order. So dun po sa unang bahagi, as we delve into these critical questions about the Philippines' energy future, it's imperative to emphasize that our approach to renewable energy must be unwavering and ambitious. While gas and LNG may serve as a transitional bridge, we must be vigilant to ensure they do not become a prolonged detour from our ultimate goal of a sustainable renewable energy landscape. So, the following questions in the first part of my interpolation address crucial concerns such as the risk of stranded assets, potential regulatory capture and the long-term costs to consumers. They also touch on the delicate balance between ensuring energy security and maintaining environmental integrity. Moreover, these inquiries aim to scrutinize our strategies to avoid overinvestment in LNG infrastructure that could hinder our competitiveness against countries transitioning more rapidly to cheaper renewable energy sources. So una po, how can the Department of Energy effectively balance the immediate need for energy security through LNG imports with the need to accelerate achievement of our environmental goals, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. President, the long answer to her honor's first question on how the Department of Energy will make that transition, and I think she wants it to be an ambitious transition to renewable energy, and at the same time, I guess, use the transition plan very responsibly, is contained in the Philippine Energy Plan, no? But precisely why we need this transition plan? Because, and I did not know this, dear colleagues, until very recently when I had to, of course, read up and educate myself when I became the Chairman of the Committee on Energy. I'm very pro renewables, but I did not know what I know now, which is for us to really be able to transition to renewable, we need to invest in storage. That is the biggest issue with renewable. That is precisely why it cannot be used as a baseload now. Inasmuch as we would like to all be renewable, we do not have the capacity to make that happen because it cannot be used as the baseload. Now, can we just purchase overnight by next year the storage facilities to make this happen? I don't think so, Mr. President. I would be very happy to be educated by anyone in the room, any expert that will tell us that that can happen, but not only is it extremely expensive, the storage, I think the hope is that in a few years, it can become more reasonably priced because until we can store it, ang dami rin na tatapon din na renewable energy sayang. So what is our transition plan? Precisely itong natural gas. And then, as to go into details on this, is the balance now between indigenous natural gas and imported natural gas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, my second question, after a follow-up question to this first one, will actually be also about that matter of storage. Yung FSR use ba, or floating storage and regasification units, or land-based LNG terminals? But a follow-up question first, or a couple of follow-up questions first to this first question. Can the good sponsor provide specific metrics and timelines for this phased approach? And how would they compare to countries successfully balancing LNG and renewables?
Is that the normal standard in 50% by 2040?
So...
Check the SDGs. Check the SDG.
So, Mr. President, the Philippine Energy Plan provides for a shift to 50% renewables by 2040. And what I am checking right now is what are the different standards of the other countries? We can easily provide that in a few minutes, so if her honor doesn't mind proceeding to the next question. But that is a metric that we can easily pull up.
All right, no problem, good sponsor, thank you. I can wait for that during our interpolation, particularly this first part of my interpolation. Also, how will you ensure, good sponsor, that the bridge provided by LNG doesn't become a long-term dependency, potentially hindering the urgent transition to renewables?
Well, that, Mr. President, I think is not very difficult to project because if the energy plan states a shift to 50% renewables in 2040, so that is around 15 years from now, then 50% will still not be renewable. And so, if we were to choose what we will prioritize after renewables, then our best bet, I think no one will argue, would be our indigenous natural gas and then imported natural gas, which is yun nga, a transition fuel, and then the others. So, there will still be a market, Mr. President. The market for LNG will not go away by 2040 or 2050 because we cannot transition completely to renewables in the next 15 to 20 years.
Of course, Mr. President, I guess that we could project that 50% would still not be renewables by 2040.
Yes.
Only because DOE set that very modest target of only 50% by 2040 instead of stretching further for a higher percentage of our energy mix to be made up of, to be made up by renewable energy. So, this is related to this whole first question about a balance, about timelines for a phased approach and about making sure that the transition, or rather, making sure that our shift to renewable energies is not pegged on the transition. Kundi kabaliktaran na yung transition is pegged to yung pinakaambitious na RE targets na kaya nating iset. In any case, I will leave this part of the interpolation at this for now and go on to my next question about about storage. But before I do that, let me rephrase this first question one more time. How much LNG?
Mr. President, I just, I'll just add, no? Because I know her honor is, like this representation, very keen on expediting and ayaw din natin minsan 'yung masyadong modest, diba? So, I wanted to ask, and I did ask our resource persons, ano naman 'yung hindi modest na expectation? So, to be more aggressive in the shift to renewable, then that would now include, Mr. President, the mix of nuclear.
Sorry, the mix of?
Nuclear.
No.
Yes, I know, so, but that is, that is the reality. And I mean, this bill does not include nuclear, so I wouldn't really want to go in that direction on the discussion, but I am being honest about what those projections are. If we will include nuclear, and many countries have made that shift during the Ukraine, shift in direction during the Ukraine war, then by 2050, 70% na yung target. So I'm just putting that there for her honor to include in her notes.
Thank you, good sponsor. Of course, prejudicial question, and I've long answered it, at least for myself, just for this representation. Ang nuclear energy, I hindi renewable energy. So hindi ko rin siya maikwenta sa energy mix natin even for a more ambitious target of 70% mix of renewable energies by 2050. I do think kaya sana magtakda ng mas ambisosong target ang DOE for renewable energies in the energy mix using true renewables and excluding nuclear. But let me rephrase my first question one more time.
Sorry again for interrupting, so one last point. DOE actually has different scenarios. So, listening to her honor's concerns that what would it be if it did not include nuclear, they have. We will just submit because they are different combinations, Mr. President. So, her honor can proceed, but we will just submit that to her.
Thank you, good sponsor. Actually, helpful yun kasi magfi-figure din yun sa yung isang follow-up question as specific metrics and timelines for the phased approach. So, I'll just rephrase my first question one more time. How much LNG does DOE envision in our energy mix by 2040? And would this bill enable us to reach the RE mix by 2040?
Okay, so, Mr. President, currently, we are using 3,700 megawatts of natural gas. And this is projected to be, to go up to 11,000 megawatts if we continue the same, if we only have the same volume coming from renewable energy. But if we are, so the second scenario is if we increase our renewable energy, then in 2040, our nat gas will still go up from the current 3,700, but only to 7,600 megawatts because the rest will be taken up by renewable energy. And that, I suppose, is the scenario that her honor and this representation would be happier with.
Yes, good sponsor, it would be better. And I'm glad that the good sponsor and I share that sentiment about it. But we could make it even better. And actually, there might be an unintended consequence of our bill because currently, under the Philippine Energy Plan, the plan is, or the current situation at present is 60% is accounted for by coal in our energy mix. If we add LNG, would this formula allow us to increase the RE energy mix by 50%? Or would it, on the contrary, further increase the fossil share in our energy mix? Kasi ang LNG ay fossil din siya. So, baka 'yung unintended consequence ay mas lalong hindi natin matupad 'yung commitments natin under the Paris Agreement of 70%, 75% reduction in our emissions, good sponsor.
Well, actually, Mr. President, we've also asked those questions. And the reality is, the demand for power and electricity will keep on getting higher in our country. We're a developing country. We, if you look at what our targets are, it is to even further industrialize. We still have many areas that do not have adequate electricity. So the demand will continue to be higher. So the challenge is for the DOE to allocate those increased demands for more renewables and to the extent that it cannot, and I am with her honor there, that we don't want our reliance on natural gas to be the deterrent to transition to renewable energy. And that is why the Energy Plan is very clear that it is a transition fuel for the totality of the energy that is needed. And I have put it on record, and again, I also am very willing to be educated that one of the major stumbling, the obstacles for a complete shift to renewable right away is really the storage. That is something, like I said, I only learned when I had to study this energy issues more closely. We do not have this, and it is also very expensive. And if you, I have asked other players in the field, and it's not something readily available yet, Mr. President. Maybe there will be new technology, there will be improvement in the discovery of ways to store. But until that happens, the transition cannot, will not, will not be something available to us in the next decade.
Salamat, good sponsor. Dada ko na nga ako ngayon sa tanong tungkol sa storage. Saying only just to, by way of closing my first question for now, na masaya ako na the good sponsor has indicated that there's a possible range of upping the LNG share from the current 3,700 megawatts to a range of 7,600 to 11,000 megawatts.
To be clear, ma'am, to be clear, Mr. President, that is not LNG, that's natural gas, which includes...
Okay, natural gas, not gas.
Kasi 'yung liquefied, pag sinabing LNG, liquefied na yun, and then they have to regasify. Which is why this representation keeps on repeating that that is why it is inherently, it tends to be more expensive. Because 'yung LNG, hindi yan pwedeng ipipe diretsyo sa atin. So, dadating niyan ng liquid, tapos irregasify. So if our colleagues will recall during the interpolation with Senator Sherwin Gatchalian yesterday, well, for two days in a row, we clarified that 'yung presyo na sinasabi niya na medyo diket sa presyo ng indigenous gas, if you add the cost of regasification, by far, mas mahal 'yung imported LNG.
By about 2 pesos, good sponsor, if I remember correctly from the previous.
Dollars, dollars.
Alright, good sponsor. And salamat for the important correction. Yes, nat gas, since this is our nat gas bill. Still, gusto ko lang iappreciate na pinointa't ng good sponsor that there's a range of possible target and achievement.
Yes, you are correct with that, yes, Mr. President.
From 7,6 megawatts to 11K megawatts from the current 3,700 megawatts. At kung magiging purposeful talaga ang DOE at mas ambisoso dun sa RE target sa energy mix natin, then pwedeng talagang mas ipush muna 'yung pag-up ng share ng RE sa energy mix, so that we may not have to go on the high end of the 7,600 megawatts to 11,000 megawatts target for nat gas. Pero kumbaga, maging first option ang renewable energies. And tunay na pantawid lang, no? Transition 'yung natural gas. So I'll leave that question here for now. Dako na ako dun sa tanong tungkol sa storage na sinabi nga ng good sponsor napaka-importanteng pag-usapan in terms of investment. So, given the uncertainties in future gas demand, and sinabi na nga ng good sponsor, the demand will rise for energy in general. But given the uncertainties in future, in particular, gas demand and the rapid evolution of renewable energy technologies, how should the DOE evaluate the trade-offs between flexible, lower-cost FSRU or floating storage and regasification units solutions trade-off sa pagitan nun at 'yung mga more capital-intensive land-based LNG terminals?
Well, Mr. President, precisely, we empower the DOE to make that determination at the proper time. This bill does not dictate, Mr. President, because I have always taken the position that as lawmakers, it is not our job to make business decisions or to regulate in those details. So, maganda ho 'yung tanong ng ating kasama, pero I think what needs to be emphasized is that see DOE ang equipped to make those proper decisions. Tama po kayo. There will, as to whether it's a capital-intensive, you know, facility that will last 50 years, tapos hindi naman pala kailangan for 50 years, mas maganda 'yung floating device. Kaya na po nila yun. In fact, if you look at the bill, we are supportive of the manpower that will be needed. Diba? We have our regulatory bodies that really need to be experts in this so that they can make the proper decisions or give the proper guidelines to create that environment. Kasi pangit naman talaga na magkicreate ka ng environment pointing to one thing when, you know, that demand for that might be not as long-term. But I also need to say that I'm almost certain that lahat naman magi-invest. We're talking about mega-box here, like, they do their research naman, no? Sila din naman ang gagastos, hindi naman ho ang gobyerno magpapatayun yan. So sila din ang gagastos niyan. So sila din, they will also use their resources to determine what would be the best investment in storage facilities, Mr. President.
Salamat, Mr. President. And nabanggit na rin ng good sponsor. I will also ask a question later about precisely 'yung expertise or 'yung capacity ng DOE at 'yung attached agencies niya to exercise or to deploy their expertise in this admittedly very new field for the energy sector in our country, 'yung nat gas field. And of course, bagamat 'yung mga stakeholders natin from the private sector will be deploying the greater part of the capital here, kailangan sabihin din ng DOE sa kanila ano 'yung specs na sa tingin ng department pinaka-optimal para sa ating public? Dahil these may be business decisions primarily for the private sector stakeholders, pero para sa energy regulatory bodies natin, importante din magweigh-in sila ngayon palamang in terms, yes, of the business or the economics of it, but also in terms of the environmental aspect, at saka in terms of achieving the overall objectives of the Philippine Energy Plan. Diba? Ano 'yung wisdom ng DOE sa ngayon tungkol sa anong klaseng storage? Mas gusto nilang kumiling ang ating private sector stakeholders, whether itong floating or 'yung mga land-based. Lalo na't environmentally sensitive din 'yung ibang mga area kung saan nakatayo na at balak pang itayo 'yung mga storage facilities natin. So, follow-up question po. How does DOE plan to mitigate the risk of stranded assets, particularly nga dun sa land-based terminals? Just in case the optimal scenario materializes, if renewable energy adoption outpaces projections, Mr. President?
Actually, Mr. President, I feel that those are the real challenges that the government and DOE in particular will face, and also the investors. And that's why this representation feels that it is very important to communicate the right message. So the number one is renewables. That, I mean, I may not say it as often in the course of defending this bill over three hours or four hours in a day because the bill is on nat gas bill. But I say it often enough, and I will repeat it because it is the question her honor poses that renewable is the priority, followed by the transition fuel. So yes, it is tricky, let's not pretend that it is not. There may be mistakes along the way that is quite, I think it is impossible to predict to an exact number what the exact mix will be. But, you know, with the use of technology, with the right expertise, they can reasonably assume what needs to be, where the investments need to be made. And that is why the Energy Plan, supported by this bill, will clearly say that renewable energy, then the transition fuel. But her honor very well knows, because it's in the news, even those operating coal plants are asking for permission to continue operations and even to expand their operations. So, those are all issues that DOE has to deal with. They are environmental, they are political, they are financial. So kailangan magagaling 'yung mga tao natin to respond to those questions. And it is a cheap source. So let's not pretend that these are easy questions to answer. Diba? Sino bang may ayaw ng mura? Pero sino bang may gusto ng madumi? You know, it is, her honor asked the right questions because it is truly a balancing act that DOE has to have the stomach to respond responsibly and for the sake of the future.
Salamat, good sponsor. And of course, kailangan pa rin nating itanong, at mamaya, itatanong ko rin dun sa tanong ko tungkol sa presyo, how mura really is mura? At saka, ang malinis ba talaga? Malinis, or hindi rin marumi sa enerhiya? And I guess, 'yung isang nakapaloob dun sa tanong ko, it's biased if we had to choose between the two, maybe biased more for floating storage rather than land-based. Not to say na imposibling maging stranded asset din 'yung floating, 'yung FSRUs, pero parang mas may possibility maging stranded asset ang land-based terminals. But having said that, yun na nga, kahit dun sa usapin ng FSRUs or floating storage and regasification units, what safeguards are in place to ensure that even though the supposed flexibility of FSRUs doesn't lead to prolonged reliance on LNG or on nat gas at the expense of renewable energy development?
Can her honor just repeat that?
Yes, good sponsor. What safeguards are in place para siguruhin na kahit 'yung sinasabing flexibility na mga FSRUs, floating storage and regasification units, na hindi yun hahan tong sa prolonged reliance sa LNG o sa nat gas na ang magsa-suffer ay 'yung renewable energy development?
Actually, Mr. President, they just have to follow the plan. The renewable energy plan is their roadmap. So if they stick with it, they should not rely on this transition plan, no? So, if they get, and I understand where her honor is coming from because the renewable energy advocates will always say that push, push for renewable, push. In fact, some don't even believe in a transition fuel. But like I said, I would be happy to be educated if how to make a transition plan that by next year, renewable nakaagad. I would be happy to because sino bang may ayaw? I'm an environmentalist. I run, I run, I used to run in the heart of Makati with all the construction going on, with all the tambuchos. Of course, I don't want to do that, but wala akong choice. Nagtatrabaho ko as a lowly associate in a law office, and that's the place I run. So I want cleaner energy, I want to run in a cleaner place. I want my children and grandchildren to live in a cleaner environment. But if the DOE sticks to the plan, then that is their guide. I cannot really assure her honor other than, and her honor has been witness to this, pag hindi nasunod 'yung plan, diba? And we have unraveled so many of those in the Senate. Dun nagkaka, sorry to put it this way, dun nagkaka-leche-leche. Kasi maganda naman 'yung plan, tapos hindi naman sinusunod. So, I think what we need here is to be very clear, and we'll be very happy to include stronger provisions on the importance of sticking to that energy plan or even not being kampante about that energy plan and seeking to, 'yung sinabi nung ating, what her honor said na, let's not be very, let's not be, she's not so happy with this modest target, diba? Let's be aggressive about it. And that's why, in that sense, maganda naman din 'yung facilities na may flexibility ng konti kasi pag medyo 'yung demand for LNG is higher, pwede naman ma-expand itong facilities na to. But, you know, those are the risks then that I've come to learn, and the example I like to give is when we determine that it is a necessity, that we do not, huwag natin tipirin 'yung paggawa ng matinong school building. On hindsight, pwede mong sabihin na, oh eh, 10% lang naman pala ng school building 'yung nababagyo, 'yung tinatamaan ng earthquake. Hindi na kailangan 'yung heavy duty, but you can't make those mistakes, hindi ho ba? So in the same way with energy, they have to, they have to go full speed ahead and invest in the renewables and also make the investments in the transition fuels as well, Mr. President.
Salamat, good sponsor, sa pagbanggit niyo sa possibility ng stronger provisions at the proper times sa period of amendments. Susubukan ng representasyong itong magcraft ng ganong klaseng stronger provisions. Safeguards nga po dahil hindi ko pa sigurado kung kahit 'yung buong Philippine Energy Plan ay sapat na na-anticipate itong pag-usbong ng, parang a very compelling transition period led by natural gas. So, dako sa susunod na tanong ko, good sponsor, Mr. President, in the course of the hearings and even the briefings, has the sponsor perhaps required DOE to provide an accounting and analysis of the financial incentives and support mechanisms that will be made available, particularly for LNG importation, and specifically focusing on the following areas? Dalawa po ito. May accounting and analysis ba in the area of tax breaks and government liabilities? Was DOE able to detail the types of tax breaks, government contingent liabilities, if any, and any complementary government-funded infrastructure initiatives? And perhaps even guarantees of cost recovery for LNG importation, storage, and distribution facilities?
So actually, Mr. President, the importation of LNG has been ongoing. And there is no new incentive. I specifically am referring to the VAT incentives because the VAT incentives are only for the, VAT exemptions, to be clear, are only for the indigenous natural gas. But there is a provision which seeks to include the facilities to be used for natural gas to be included in the Tier 3 of CREATE. And that is based on our determination... And that is based on our determination that energy security should be a prime concern in terms of achieving economic development. And if you look at the enumeration in Tier 3 of CREATE, the last item, letter V or five, refers to activities that contribute to catch up, the catch-up of the economy. And what other factor is contributing to our catch-up than a steady energy supply? If you look at the top five reasons why we do not have as many investors as our ASEAN neighbors have, electricity is always there. So that is the response, Mr. President.
Thank you, good sponsor. A little later, may tanong din ako tungkol dun sa investment situation dito sa Pilipinas and how nat gas or the transition would play into that. But one more question about the accounting and analysis on the finance side. What about, may focus na ba ang DoE on existing subsidies? To identify and describe the current subsidies and support being provided for gas exploration, transmission, and related activities?
Well sadly, Mr. President, wala nga tayong exploration here, so zero yan. So zero, zero ang lumala ba sa atin. But should there be takers, which is what this goal, this bill intends to support? But even without the bill, DoE has taken the lead on that and they have bidding going on, then PD-87 provides for those incentives. And basically, I can explain what it is in a nutshell is that this exploration and development costs hundreds of millions into the bill, well billions of pesos to happen. And if they don't discover anything, there is no cost to government. But if they do discover, then that is where the formula kicks in and there is a sharing. And I think her honor has heard this representation explain that sharing quite a number of times already. But 60% of the revenues would go back to government.
Thank you, good sponsor. Itu bang mga analyses, initial analyses on the tax breaks, on subsidies? These analyses that are inputs to cost-benefit analyses, available na po ba sila?
Just to be clear, Mr. President, we are not changing anything in this bill on the upstream side in terms of the incentives for exploration development that is covered by PD-87, and we are not touching that. So I can, the DoE is aware of her honor's question. We can pass that on. But it's not something that we are, we have prepared to discuss just because it's not covered by this bill, Mr. President.
I see. All right, good sponsor. In that case, para lang mas may material tayo to look at or to try to craft cost-benefit analyses also for the midstream and downstream. So if we don't have all these parts of the analysis yet, and since the proposed bill will create entitlements for this, may I request na lang through the good sponsor that DoE also submit to us or provide us with the following insights? Dalawa rin. So una, a per kilowatt hour computation of the price of gas from both imported LNG and domestically-produced sources. And if the department could include in that any assumptions of government support or variables that may affect these calculations. And secondly, kung maaaring makapagsubmit ang DoE sa atin through the good sponsor, computations for a scenario where, at dito, bumabalik ako sa naunang tanong ko, a scenario where we exclusively build only floating storage and regasification units, or FSRUs, taking note of their redeployability. If DoE could include computations on the potential resources that could be then freed up for renewable energy programs if FSRUs are utilized instead of traditional land-based and more financially massive LNG facilities?
Your honor, we, the DoE has heard her honor's questions and we have instructed them to provide. But we'd just like to put on record that the investments are coming from private individuals, private entities. So as long as the renewable energy plan is, if we stick to that renewable energy plan, then it is up to the investors to determine if they are investing in renewable energy, if they are investing in LNG. Some of them may be the same parties, some of them may be different parties. But the plan is there to help guide them in what kind of energy, where the bulk of the purchases will be. So for an investor to determine if they will do a floating device or a permanent structure, I do believe that that is their freedom of, you know, that is where we do not interfere with the business decisions of these individuals. But of course, DoE can provide the timelines. Like if they say, you know, the demand might be very volatile because ang dami nating indigenous gas. So baka konti lang 'yung demand, you might prefer to build a small, a smaller storage facility na magagamit parate, pero small. Or you might prefer a floating vessel that can be expanded and retracted. So that's where, your honor, to be perfectly honest, we leave it to the DoE and the private investors to hash out. It's, that will no longer be covered by this measure, Mr. President.
Perhaps I can, this representation can just attempt in the period of amendments to push this idea a bit further because, of course, government does not interfere with the individual business decisions of private investors. Pero dahil ang Philippine Energy Plan, 'yung kumbaga biblia natin dito even in discussing the bill, although all stakeholders could have participated, government led the formulation of the plan. And government could also recommend or guide improvements to the plan. Kanina pinag-usapan natin stronger provisions on, ito nga, on storage. So, and government could, still within the context of the Philippine Energy Plan, visualize alternative scenarios and compute on those alternative scenarios. So lalo na kung bukod sa economic, there are also environmental and other considerations. So I'll just return to this at the proper time, good sponsor, in the period of amendments. So, dako po ako sa susunod na tanong ko. Okay. In an unlikely scenario where new technologies make for much more available and cheaper LNG from abroad, in that unlikely scenario, how could the Philippines ensure that its investment in LNG infrastructure genuinely supports the transition to renewable energy rather than create a long-term dependence on fossil fuels? Mr. President?
Well, as this representation has explained during the previous interpolations, our demand for energy is so high. If we were a Nordic country, and I'm just making this up, no? But I always use that as an example, where you have 8 million people and they are fully able to supply all the energy needs. I think they would be more problematic about how to make those shift. But we have brownouts happening all over the country. And even in the next 10 years, our indigenous gas will not be able to supply all the transition fuel that is needed. So I think that is not the biggest problem we will have. I think it would be a great problem if renewable energy storage technology improves rapidly so that market can really grow. And then indigenous gas, there are more wells that will be discovered. And we can build more storage facilities if her honor prefers that it's more conservative. DoE can listen. But that will, at the end of the day, also be based on the business judgment of the investors. When they see that the opportunities are there, they will make those decisions. But they already know that the goal is renewable. They know that already. And next, if we pass this bill, the second priority will be indigenous gas. But the discoveries will not happen immediately. In fact, after discovery, it takes, did I hear right? Six years, four to seven years after discovery. So 'yung floating vessels na sinasabi ng ating kasamahan, siguro naman anim na buwan, pwede nang makarating na 'yan dito. So they can use some of those and then they can even rent that, I suppose, and return it and then build a storage facility. So I think they can manage. Ang hina naman natin if we can't manage that.
Thank you, good sponsor. And how will these phase-out timelines and renewable energy milestones be enforced? And what penalties will be in place for non-compliance?
I think that would be a subject matter of another bill. This representation would be happy to take a look at that if her honor would like to file a resolution. I think that's a great idea to really see how these phase-out plans. Because even now, I've seen very interesting shifts in the technology of solar panels. Like parang mukha na lang siyang tint. Mukha na lang siyang tint na pwedeng idikit sa mga salamin. So eh paano kung may investor dyan na bumili na 'yung mga ang bibigat, na ang lalaki? But I suppose for the next, I don't know how long, may demand pa dun, baka 'yung tinted na 'yun eh ano pa lang, nasa developmental stage. But we, that is the world we live in, no? Technology changes rapidly. And even those in renewable now, if they're not willing to make the shift, mapapag-iwanan din. So I think it's a sector that people are willing to take risk, but also very much willing, I hope, I hope, to take the risk in the right direction.
I share that hope, good sponsor. And salamat dun sa suggestion na maybe craft another bill or file a resolution regarding this question. Another option, of course, is also to look at...
Sorry, madam, Mr. President, I forgot the point of giving that example pala in the shift to the easier, the thinner, the lighter solar panels is what then do you do with all these big, heavy solar equipment? So that's why I believe that her honor's question is valid and the need for legislation may be very important because that, what do you call that phase? 'Yung when you clean it up and you... Decommissioning, 'yun. Kasi sa natural gas, we have that, eh, the decommissioning. But if you think about it, and I don't know what the proper phrase is, sa renewable, di dapat may ganun din, diba? Kasi magshif ka nga sa mas, there will be a natural shift. So I think it's worth looking into another time, Mr. President.
I agree, good sponsor, Mr. President. It's worth looking into. But I think not necessarily another time, possibly even within this bill. Kasi, meron na, ang tawag nito.
We have that, your honor, within this bill. We have the provision on the decommissioning. That's part of the lifespan from the exploration, discovery, development, transportation, and then delivery to the end user, and then the decommissioning. That is covered, Mr. President. As far as natural gas is concerned, this is the right time. Her honor is correct. So any concerns or improvement on the measure on that is very welcome here.
Maraming salamat, good sponsor. That is great to hear, Mr. President. Dahil, diba, guided overall by the Philippine Energy Plan, papunta naman tayo sa gusto natin mas sustainable na energy mix, energy situation by 2040. As the good sponsor said, that's a good sweet 16 years from now. And 'yung ibang mga timetables na pinag-uusapan natin in terms of nat gas in particular are shorter chunks, smaller chunks of time, six months or four to seven years, kanina pinag-uusapan. So there's really an opening by insisting that the renewable energy targets envisioned in the Philippine Energy Plan will indeed be targeted at hopefully mas ambitiously. And that with the emergence of this scintillating transition period of nat gas, that we don't fall in love with it for too long na may natural na pagpipigil tayo sa pag-accelerate ng RE in a way there will be some restraint or just some sense of timeliness on the part of the nat gas part of our energy mix para paunahin talaga 'yung renewable energy. And that's why I'm concerned about timelines and milestones and non-compliance. So lastly, about this topic, good sponsor, Mr. President, what measures therefore are being taken to prevent regulatory capture by LNG interests that might seek to extend the lifespan of LNG infrastructure beyond the transition period?
So, Mr. President, what is very clear in our current laws and regulation now is that we are prioritizing renewable energy. So to the extent that renewable energy can be pushed, it is being pushed. But let's recognize, and many laymen do not understand this principle, that you cannot, for now, we have not discovered a way to use renewable energy for our baseload. So 'yung choices natin sa baseload will not include renewable, does not include renewable energy, and that's where LNG comes in. Now, what is the regulatory capture? How do we ensure that hindi tumagal beyond the timeline that we want to transition into renewable? I go back to the energy plan where there is a specific timeline and they have the calculations as to how much LNG will go up? Because it will still go up. As I said, we are far from producing or not producing, supplying the energy that the whole country needs to support the economic development that we want. So it will go up, but it will go up slower, slower. Dahil nga, ika-capture na sana ni renewable, 'yun. And then, let's keep in mind that there are supply agreements that the ERC is required to approve, and they can also come in there. Obviously, if they know na, eh, wala nang demand for LNG, hindi na pwede, then they will not approve a long-term plan. Ganun lang 'yun. And I think that's what we're already seeing now with the coal. There is a demand because as I said, there is a continuing need for energy. But I think DoE is trying, I'd like to think that they are trying not to be too dependent on coal, despite the fact that talaga ang dami pang brownout. It's a tough decision.
Yes, I agree, good sponsor. Thank you for that, Mr. President. And of course, marami, mayaman na sa karanasan 'yung ERC in particular, and DoE, of course, and the attached agencies. 'Yung pressures din, 'yung push and pull, even about what should be purely economic forces of supply and demand. Minsan, and this is, bahagi nung maraming heartaches and heartbreaks natin about the implementation of the EPIRA. Minsan, kahit wala nang sasabihing ganyang kataas na demand for a certain energy because there's a supply, somehow na ano, na inaaway na didistor 'yung sitwasyon at either kulang, 'yung pag-pushback nung ating energy regulators or out and out, may mga reklamo ng regulatory capture. And since we know na naging karanasan natin 'yan from time to time in the past, siyempre, on the eve of, the dawn of a new transition era of nat gas, gusto nating maiwasan 'yun. Hindi naman innocent ang ERC at all. They know about these realities sa landscape and they should be the wisest how to prevent recurrence of this. para rin manatiling tapat dun sa Philippine Energy Plan. So, just to make that of record, good sponsor, Mr. President. Sa susunod kong tanong, what steps is DOE taking to enhance its regulatory framework to effectively manage the energy transition, particularly in terms of balancing LNG development with the growth of renewable energy sources and ensuring grid stability, Mr. President?
I'd like to think I've answered that question, your honor, because the Energy Plan is the roadmap that is being followed. And so, given the energy mix that they seek to achieve, and the clear demand for more power, right now, there is a demand for more renewables, there is a demand for more natural gas. And in terms of natural gas being divided between indigenous and LNG, there is a demand for all of that as well. But they do have a few more, they have scenarios, Mr. President, but I can say with certainty that right now, there is so much more demand. And to be clear, Mr. President, the law, the bill actually refers to a comprehensive plan that DOE will provide. This is the Philippine Downstream Natural Gas Distribution Development Plan. And this will contain, among others, information on the distribution systems and virtual transportation systems, including location, construction, operation, and maintenance, expansion, modification, rehabilitation, decommissioning, and abandonment, whichever is applicable. The plan shall also include all studies, programs, and policies for the promotion and development of the distribution sector. So, I think in addition to the Energy Plan, ito na ho 'yung mas detalyadong mga plano na tinatanong ng ating kasamahan, na baka it's not yet available in the Energy Plan. That is why we want to pass this measure to have more details on the natural gas development plan.
Salamat, good sponsor, Mr. President. Totoo maraming moving parts ito. And with this question, isinama ko na 'yung part nung grid, ensuring its stability. And dito siyempre, papasok 'yung nat gas development. And andun na 'yung ating efforts na 'yung RE sources ma-upload din sa grid at ma-distribute sa pamamagitan ng grid. Follow-up question to that, how does DOE plan, ito na banggit na rin natin ng good sponsor kanina about capacity. How does DOE plan to address potential limitations in government capacity to effectively implement and oversee these complex regulatory changes?
Pakiulit 'yung tanong, how does DOE...
Paano, paano pinaplano ng DOE i-address 'yung mga potential limitations sa kapasidad ng gobyerno na effectively i-implement tas mag-exercise ng oversight dito sa mga complex regulatory changes na ito?
Yeah. Well, first of all, Mr. President, we know that we are government-run by people. And so, I think the first step should be really capacitating our people. And we provide that in section, in the Declaration of Policy. It includes the developing the necessary technical expertise and skills of personnel in government agencies and the private sector to support the development of the natural gas industry. Kasi, kung ako tatanungin niyo, wala talaga akong capacity to implement this. I can, I think I understand enough to provide for the policy framework, which is this bill. But we really need technical people. And yeah, we've included that in the bill precisely because we feel that is very important.
Agree. Thank you, good sponsor. And a second follow-up question, what specific measures are being taken to ensure that even grid modernization efforts prioritize renewable energy integration even over LNG flexibility, Mr. President?
So, Mr. President, to be clear, there is no difference in the capacity of the grid to facilitate power that comes from renewable energy or others. So, there is no need to make a specific shift or to prepare for that. Having said that, though, DOE is constantly updating, or at least trying to update themselves and keep themselves abreast with changes in the landscapes in other countries, which makes it easy for us in a way, because we can just look at what's happening there and then also working with the private sector as well.
Thank you, good sponsor. So, again, at the proper time during the period of amendments, probably this representation will attempt to propose amendments that will indeed prioritize RE over LNG even in the grid. Thank you, good sponsor. So, huling tanong ko dito sa first part ng interpolation ko. Kanina napag-usapan din natin, good sponsor, 'yung tungkol sa investment situation. So, there are not too many investment opportunities in the country. For example, we've even been called a manufacturing desert. And real property development appears to be going into stagnation mode for the next five years. And of course, it's a crisis when capital has nowhere to go. And we won't be surprised if investors in the gas sector will want to invest more rather than less. So, what specific measures and assessment tools is the DOE implementing to prevent the overbuilding of LNG infrastructure and to protect consumers from the financial burden of potential stranded assets?
I believe we've answered that question, your honor, that the DOE has made very clear. And when we pass this bill, it will continue to work with the private sector, the investors on the demand for renewable based on the targets in the Energy Plan. And then, the use of LNG as a transition fuel. It is in our best interest that we have enough supply. I think that is the most important. As to whether it can be predicted to the exact mix, I think that is highly impossible or improbable. But that is the goal, Mr. President, that there is enough supply. Ang hirap kasi 'yung sabihin pag kinulang, so papaano, papasok 'yung coal, eh pareho ho tayong, Mr. President, pareho tayo ng kasamahan natin na hindi masyadong masaya kung kolang dadagdag. So, siyempre, magpo-push talaga tayo dun sa transition fuel hangga't hindi pa kakayanin ng renewable. So, DOE has those guidelines in place. And I think the most that they can do is to really stay on top of the, you know, be always analyzing the data. And I mean, if things go well for us and there is a boom in our economy, as that is the objective of Create More, which we just passed, the objective of so many bills, even in education, so that we have a vibrant employment sector. And then, the demand for energy will continue to increase as predicted. And hopefully, we stick to the plan and we don't allow ourselves to be derailed by the availability of both natural gas and other sources, because we do want to make the shift to renewables.
Yes, thank you, good sponsor. I guess this representation would continue to think on how to craft proposed amendments regarding this issue, because kung, like with any infrastructure, I suppose, salimbawa sa mga syudad natin, or even just in our homes, kapag alam natin na meron tayong transition period, we would tend to build 'yung sakto lang, or even minimalistically, dahil ayaw natin na kapag lampas na tayo sa transition period and papasok na tayo sa long term, in this case, a bigger renewable energy share sa energy mix na burden tayo sa mga hard infra of the transition period. Na kapag naging stranded assets ito, ay baka patuloy pang pagkakagastosan ng consumer. So, bringing us farther away from, rather than nearer to, least cost. At 'yun na nga, mas murang kuryente para sa ating mga kababayan. A follow-up question here, how will any assessment tools account for the rapidly declining costs of renewable energy and storage technologies, which could in turn accelerate the obsolescence of LNG infrastructure?
The question is, how would assessment tools, what is that?
Paano ikikwenta nitong assessment tools? 'Yung magmumura na 'yung RE and storage technologies. Dahil nagmumura ito, baka pabilisin 'yan na maging laos na 'yung LNG infrastructure. How will the assessment tools account for this?
I think, Mr. President, like I am not a, I cannot even consider myself yet an energy expert, but it's very clear to me that the shift will be to renewable, and we are waiting. And we know that there will, as we've seen in everything, there is, there are those moments where suddenly there's new technology that is cheaper. We do expect that to happen. But the demand, as I have kept on repeating, for power is so high in this country that the need for LNG to support renewable will be there for quite a while. And even in 2040, which is when we have that plan to be 50% renewable, there will be still 50%, Mr. President. So, medyo malayo humangyari 'yung situation na ang biggest problem natin is mag-overinvest, siguro. But it is a good, it is good that her honor points that out, so DOE is aware. But right now, hindi ho tayo pinipilahan. Wala ho tayong exploration. We are even only in the bidding phase, so it is a concern that should be, should not be, should still be there in our radar, but it is far from our major concerns.
Fair enough, good sponsor. Although I would also, this representation would also rather, na kahit habang hindi pa tayo pinipilahan, we, the Philippines, set ourselves up as a, in a way, even if modestly, or less modestly, hopefully, a pioneer for RE after a quick transition period. Huling follow-up question ko, dito sa, huling tanong ko sa...
But just for her honor's own, for her information and her team that clearly is very concerned with renewables. The Renewable Energy Law itself creates a body, it's called the National Renewable Energy Board. And it is their responsibility to monitor and review the implementation of the law, to review technologies. So, sila ho ang titingin at magga-guide siguro ng mas detalye sa DOE din to say na, oh, may mga bagong technology, oh, baka 'yung timeline natin ang pag-shift ng 10 years, eh, 7 years, you know? So, all of these things, thankfully, we have passed that law, 'yung binabanggit ko, batas na 'yan. And that is in place already.
Thank you, good sponsor. That should really come in helpful dito sa pagbaybay natin sa bill. So, 'yun na nga, huling follow-up question ko, dito sa unang bahagi ng interpolation. What specific consumer protection mechanisms are being put in place to shield Filipino consumers from bearing the costs of stranded LNG assets in a scenario in which renewable energy comes to be far more commercially viable even than gas? Mr. President?
I think I've answered that, with all due respect. I think it boils down to the same question that her honor has been asking the last two or three questions.
Well, I guess beyond the actions of the National Renewable Energy Board, ito namang huling tanong in this part, ay, 'yung consumer representation and participation. Pati sa ano, pati sa pag-design itong transition period of nat gas in between the coal, but as a transition, dahil fossil din naman ang nat gas, then papunta sa long-term na renewable energy. And I share the hope of the good sponsor na mas maagang aabot tayo dun sa scenario na 'yung renewable energy really has a significant, or even a dominant, share in our energy mix.
Dagdag ko lang, Mr. President, that the bill, this bill includes the creation of a technical committee. And dun sa, kasi her honor mentioned consumers, you know? So, dun sa technical committee, meron tayong representatives from the academe, trade and industry, consumer, to be very specific, professional associations, research institutions, government agency, testing institutions, and other relevant sectors. This can be found in Section 5.
Thank you, good sponsor. So, good sponsor, Mr. President, I'm one-third of the way through in my interpolation. Gusto ba ng, good sponsor, ipagpatuloy natin or mag-suspend po na ako?
No, we are continuing, because we have a timeline, I think, that has been discussed with the leadership. So, we are happy to continue for as long as her honor has questions.
Alright, salamat po, good sponsor, Mr. President. So, itong midway na, no, as we continue to examine the Philippines' energy strategy, it's crucial to maintain a laser focus on the ultimate goal, a sustainable renewable energy future. While LNG may play a transitional role, we must be vigilant against the risks of over-reliance on this fossil fuel. So, the following questions delve deeper into the technical, economic, and regulatory challenges of integrating LNG into our energy mix while prioritizing renewable energy development. So, these inquiries address critical concerns such as the potential still for stranded assets, the need for flexible infrastructure, and the importance of robust environmental safeguards. They also explore the delicate balance between short-term energy security and sustainability goals, always with an eye towards maintaining the Philippines' competitiveness in a rapidly evolving global energy landscape. So, getting a bit more, but not too technical naman, Mr. President, good sponsor. How is DOE planning to incorporate the potentials of hydrogen and ammonia into its long-term energy strategy? And what legislative measures are being considered to facilitate the development and integration of these technologies in the Philippines? I understand that the regulations for gas in Australia, for example, include provisions for regulations and support systems for hydrogen, for which ammonia is a pathway fuel for hydrogen deployment in retrofitted gas plants. So, ito parang post-not gas era na nila, Mr. President?
Mr. President, I quickly conferred with DOE. And they're familiar with this, but with all due respect, it's no longer covered by the scope of this bill. So, if her honor won't mind, either she can directly relate it to this bill, because we're here to answer. But this, in particular, about their plans, like if her honor asks about nuclear, I'll also say the same thing, it's not the scope of this bill if we talk about. But to the extent that we talk about the energy mix, then of course, I will just give my answer about the Philippine Energy Plan. So, but do note that we've referred it to the DOE, and they will be happy to provide a response if her honor would like to discuss that at another time.
Thank you, good sponsor. That's enough for me for now to be able to discuss this further with the DOE. Noting lang na it's also related to my first, or one of my first questions about comparing and contrasting 'yung plano natin to get to RE through gas, comparing with 'yung nagiging proseso sa ibang mga bansa, which is also why I mention Australia. Alright, since my follow-up questions to this are about hydrogen and ammonia technologies and about blue hydrogen from LNG, if the good sponsor won't mind, I'll just put them on record, tapos i-follow-up na lang ng office ko sa DOE. One follow-up question is, how will the department ensure that investments in hydrogen... ko sa DOE. One follow-up question is, how will the department ensure that investments in hydrogen and ammonia technologies don't divert resources for more immediate and cost-effective renewable energy solutions? And what safeguards are being put in place to prevent the development of blue hydrogen from LNG which could extend fossil fuel dependence? So dako na ako sa susunod na tanong, what specific design criteria and technologies should the DOE mandate for new LNG facilities to ensure maximum flexibility and, nabanggit na rin ng good sponsor kanina, cost-effective decommissioning or even repurposing considering the uncertain future of gas in the Philippine energy mix? Mr. President?
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Certainly.
Because the last, I was noting the last part, you mentioned the decommissioning, but the first part-
Certainly, good sponsor. So anong specific design criteria at saka technologies ang dapat i-mandate ng department para sa bagong LNG facilities para siguruhin yung maximum flexibility nila?
So, Mr. President, I will refer her honor to the bill and the declaration of policy, which refers, which states that it is a policy of the state to provide a conducive industry environment for the promotion and development of the PDNGI, which is the natural gas industry, through the issuance of regulatory policies, the localized codes and standards for products, facilities, and its operations based on the Philippine national standards and plans and programs. So it is clear that that is the responsibility of DOE, no? And I don't have the details, that will not be contained here in this measure, but Section 18 also refers to the compliance with standards. The DOE shall ensure that permit holders and participants, participants' products, facilities, services, and systems comply with the standards set by relevant government agencies in terms of quality, design, efficiency, safety, structural integrity, and operation and maintenance. Regulations shall be consistent with applicable Philippine and internationally accepted natural gas industry standards. So hindi naman ho tayo papayag na yung ipapatayo dito is substandard o di kaya eh, turn of the century 2000, diba? Dapat yung bago. So that is what we can assure her honor and we've provided very clearly in the bill that these are the standards that we will follow, international standards, Mr. President?
Thank you, good sponsor. Pwedeng pwede nga, doon sa Section 18, pumasok pa yung mga aspeto ng design criteria at saka technologies. And following on one of my earlier questions, baka dito rin sa section on compliance with standards, pwedeng pumasok yung, kung mas magiging proactive pa ang DOE sa anong klasing, ano yung porma nung, nung transition period ang mas gusto nila, including in terms of storage, for example, ay yun na nga, baka mas pwedeng mapush ng DOE yung mas sa halip na land-based, mas floating, at least or a mix of FSRUs and land-based storage facilities leaning more towards the floating facilities. Na ayon sa literature, mas madaling i-decommission at mas madali ring i-repurpose. Halimbawa doon sa, nabangit kong ilang mga bansa pa, which are using nat-gas as a transition pero towards fuller RE future. So follow-up questions, if the good sponsor would care to comment on them further perhaps in relation to Section 18, how will these design criteria impact the overall cost of LNG infrastructure and what measures are in place to prevent these costs from being passed on to consumers? Mr. President?
What is your honor's question? What are the designs?
Ano yung impact nitong design criteria sa overall na presyo ng LNG infrastructure? At paano mapigilan mapass on yung cost na yun sa consumers?
Well, our law provides for reasonable cost only, Mr. President. So siyempre, kung magdi-design naman sila ng facility na sobra-sobra naman sa pangangailangan, hindi na yun reasonable cost, hindi na rin pwedeng i-recover. I think, I think that standard is clearly set in our law, in the bill, that that will be the, not just guide, but that is the standard that we are setting.
Salamat, good sponsor. And what specific repurposing options are being considered for LNG infrastructure? And how feasible are they in supporting a renewable energy future? Kung meron ng repurposing options?
Repurposing po saan? From what to what?
Repurposing ng LNG infrastructure.
I know, repurposing from what to what? LNG to something else?
Yes. Kung yare, kung tapos na yung transition through LNG and papunta na talaga doon sa fuller RE future, meron na bang repurposing options na kinokonSIDER sa LNG infra?
It appears that for now, they are not aware of a specific repurposing, I don't know what you call it, technology or plan. But I'm guessing, like anything else in life, something will appear, there might be something, but as of now, wala pa silang naiencounter. I've asked them to also check if there's such a thing in other countries, like if her honor recalls, I had mentioned that there's a shift to nuclear from, from natural gas in other countries after they saw what happened in Ukraine and then nagtaasan yung presyo. So pwede ho tayo magtanong doon kung, kung nga yung kanilang LNG facilities eh, napalitan nila to nuclear, I don't know. I'm not an expert. I do know that nuclear is very, very specific, so baka LNG to nuclear, hindi mangyayari. But LNG to renewable, medyo wala pa silang clear, wala pa silang nakikitang ganon. But her honor's questions are noted and they will also check if there's, if there are examples of that in other countries.
Thank you very much for that, good sponsor. And I think it's only fair nga that DOE will begin to look into that, kung hindi pa nila nagagawa dahil nga, sinasabi nila, transition para sa atin ang nat-gas and papunta pa rin sa RE. So parang thinking forward, I mean, the good sponsor is the Chair of the Futures Thinking Committee or-
Still is, right? Ah, no longer. But, but her honor, I thank you for mentioning because I continue to be a strong supporter of Futures Thinking and all of her honor's questions should be taken into, into account by our agencies because these are, these are valid concerns that will, that will have to be faced in the future.
Salamat, good sponsor. So I appreciate the pioneering work that the good sponsor had done in that committee and na, napaalalahanan ako nun dito sa pangangailangan sana na, since nat-gas is proposed as a transition, papunta sa RE future, na pati yung mga hardware, yung mga infra natin ay pag-isipan na natin kung papaano yun na nga, i-re-repurpose o i-re redesign para di siya sayang, di siya maging white elephant lamang, at lalo na kung pagbabayaran pa ng ating mga consumers ay dahil patuloy pa rin namang pinakikinabangan even in that RE future. So sa susunod kong tanong, how is DOE planning to integrate the growth of intermittent renewable energy sources? So nabangit din ang good sponsor kanina. But how integrate the growth of these intermittent RE sources with LNG-powered generation to ensure grid stability? And what role does DOE envision for energy storage technologies in this integration, Mr. President?
That's currently being done already. We all know, well, no, we don't all know, but those in the industry know that RE is intermittent. And so it is already being integrated because di talaga siya maasahan sa base load. So as we speak, natural gas is already contributing to the base load and intermittent, for intermittent sources, doon ho pumapasok ang renewable. That is our situation right now.
Salamat, good sponsor. It must be a real challenge also for DOE na dahil yung isang end goal din nila ay grid stability. So in a way, that's a quantitative goal and yung intermittence ng RE sources may be thought of as a quantitative problem pero qualitatively gustong-gusto natin yan. So it must be an interesting, certainly an important challenge for DOE or for NGCP for that matter na yung magiging LNG-powered generation na maaring iargue nila ay mas stable paano sa, pagsasabayin sa grid with the more desirable or longer term or sabi natin more strategic na RE sources kahit intermittent siya. So how will, by way of follow-up, how will DOE ensure that the flexibility provided by LNG doesn't become a crutch that slows down investments in more sustainable grid stabilization technologies like battery storage?
I think I've answered that question, your honor. The energy plan, the Philippine Energy Plan is to transition to renewables. But as her honor has just said less than a minute ago, this is an intermittent source and so we have to rely on, rely on the sources that can provide for the base load. And if we look at what is being done now, that is exactly what will continue to happen, probably in the next 10, 20 years.
Thank you, good sponsor. I guess yung, yung battery storage na yun na nga, sa solar energy front, nakita natin yung improvements in that technology in the past years.
But it is still, but it is still far, it is still very far from, I'm very excited about it, but I had, that's one of the very first questions I asked in my briefing as chairman. And malayo pa yung ability natin to, to capture that storage. But yes, we are as hopeful as her honor in seeing that happen sooner than later.
I'm glad about that, good sponsor. Yung shared hope na ganon dahil kahit pa paano, baga mat maaring hindi pa kaagad na mafofully realize yan, breakthrough na rin yung teknolohiya sa battery storage for solar energy, among other, among other REs. At kung pwede ng intervention, yung battery storage na yan para gawing sustainable or gawing, rather, gawing stable ang grid kahit habang sinasampahan ang mga intermittent, but desirable because more sustainable na renewable energies na sana bumilis at hindi bumagal yung investments dyan dahil baka nagkaroon ng parang learned dependence on, on LNG. And-
Well, if I may add, in a way, and I, to just point out to her honor how much I share her concern, parang ganon din ang nangyayari sa atin, diba? Nagkakaroon din tayo ng dependen sa coal kasi gustuhin man nating mga energy, mga environmental advocates na mag-shift na kaagad, sasabihin sa atin eh, kasi mas murato o kasi intermittent din yung supply. So that's why for now, we feel like our best option is itong transition fuel. But I take her honor's concerns very seriously, na hindi naman tayo dyan maging dependent. In the same way, we don't want to see the dependence on the non-renewables because it will derail our, our transition. So I, I am with her honor 100%.
Marami salamat para doon, good sponsor. Huling follow-up dito sa topic na to, what measures are being taken to prioritize demand response and other smart grid technologies that can support renewable integration without relying on fossil fuels?
Well, her honor, the, the number one response to that question is the priority dispatch. The law, the law we have in place requires that renewable must, must be dispatched first. So yun talaga, I mean, marami pa tayong pwedeng isipin. Of course, I can talk about more awareness, more campaigns, and other programs, but that is the number one step being taken. And then we have the Green Energy Auction Program, the Renewable Portfolio Standards, the Offshore Wind Policy Framework, but this, at 10 of the day, gawin, build mo lahat yan pero walang priority dispatch, di wala rin humangyayari. So I think I'll stick to that first answer as the most important step being taken.
Marami salamat. Most important talaga po, good sponsor. And the, the good sponsor's response highlights yung gaano ka importante yung oversight function na ine-exercise natin sa kongreso that all of these ecological and energy laws, the ecology and the energy mandates coexisting in each of these laws, dapat talaga mapatupad in energy, in any energy reforms, including trying to see our way through a nat-gas transition to an RE future. And what comprehensive measures is the DOE implementing to ensure that the entire LNG supply chain in the Philippines, from import terminals to end use, will meet or exceed potential future international standards for methane emission control? Mr. President?
I've read into the record, your honor, the existing provision that we have in this bill that requires that we comply with international energy standards, Mr. President, international standards, regulatory standards.
Alright, salamat, good sponsor. Before we reach the period of amendments, tignan ko ulit kung yung buong LNG supply chain na yun reflected na doon sa compliance natin with those international standards here in, in our bill. Susunod na tanong ko po-
I'll just clarify, if her honor doesn't mind, no? Her honor often refers to LNG, but let's be clear that we are also going to regulate natural gas. So that when I, when I affirm what her honor is saying, that also require, that also, it means that we are using the same high standards whether it's natural gas, imported gas or indigenous.
Thank you, good sponsor. But, Mr. President, the good sponsor will kindly forgive this representation if mayat-maya I, I shift between talking with her about nat-gas and LNG, kasi alam naman natin na in transporting nat-gas necessarily, na ko-convert siya by a certain scientific process into LNG, and then that's where the regasification comes in at a later, at a later stage, kahit doon sa storage, kaya napag-uusapan yung FSRUs, where the R is the regasification nga po.
But to be clear, but to be clear, for indigenous nat-gas, because of the existing pipelines that were built, there is no more regasification. So it is not LNG. That's why I have to clarify that it is, it is gas. It is not, it is not being transported as liquid gas and there is also no regasification involved. So there, so that's why the, the more generic term is just nat-gas. But obviously, if we're referring to imported gas, unless we're importing it from a place that is close enough to build pipelines, then, and some will argue, which we will disagree, that any country is close enough, then that's the only time that it is LNG.
Understood, good sponsor. But in any case, in whatever state of matter it is, gas man siya o liquid man siya, in the case of, kung may imported, yung basic na, baga chemical structure niya ay yun-yun. So-
Correct, but I just wanted to make the clarification because when her honor refers to, let's say, a certain standard and dapat ganito tayo sa LNG, then I'm even taking that statement further to say that covered din dyan yung indigenous nat-gas, kasi hindi siya LNG. Just to be clear, if years from now, somebody quotes the, you know, takes a look at our, our journal, in most cases, the, the, the standards, the regulations will cover both, all kinds of, of gas unless, of course, it's just referring to that particular state, which is the liquid nat-gas.
Thank you, good sponsor. Further follow-up questions and kaya medyo- And kaya medyo kinukulit ko ito, good sponsor, pasensya na, because not-gas is essentially methane, as we all know, and it's even worse than carbon dioxide. So given the significant climate impact of any methane leaks, how will these emission control measures be independently verified and enforced, Mr. President?
This is where our provision that we've spread into the record comes in, because we are, the DOE is guided by international standards, and all of the investors, all of the bidders will have to comply with those international standards. If they are followed, then the chances of leakages is extremely low. So, so for so long as the methane emissions are well-managed, it is really not, it is not problematic and does not contribute to global warming. But again, the devil is in the details, so those high standards must be maintained. And it is, it is truly our hope that we only deal with these companies, these investors that have high-track records, but those are, those are part of the requirements of DOE. And I welcome Her Honor's earlier suggestion that we exercise our oversight committee, not to oversight function, to ensure that these high standards that we expect to be honored are put in place. And then to add also, Mr. President, we are creating in this bill an inter-agency health, safety, security, and environment inspection and monitoring team. And this is composed of co-chaired by DOE and the DNR, and then its member government agencies are the Maritime Industry Authority, the Philippine Coast Guard, the Department of Labor and Employment, Bureau of Fire Protection, Department of Health, and other relevant government agencies.
Thank you, good sponsor. So 'yung mga bodies na iki-create din nung bill natin will really be very important also nga in terms of these emission control measures. Kasi any methane leaks would contribute further to, to global warming. And kung, kung 'yung mga bakal nga eh, di ba, sa agrikultura, sa, sa animal husbandry, sinasabing nakakadagdag sa overall methane in our, in our atmosphere, ano pa kaya ang higit na high-tech na industriya tulad ng not-gas sa ating energy sector? And how do these methane control measures factor into the overall cost-benefit analysis of not-gas versus RE sources, Mr. President?
The, the standards that are required to ensure safety when it comes to methane leakages are already part of the cost, the total cost incurred by the investor. So that's, that's, that's what they're prepared to. There would be no, no, what do you call it? No, no investment, what do you call it? There would be no award to them if that was not taken into consideration. And then when, Her Honor is asking for comparison with renewables? Well, with renewables, I'm not aware that, that is the issue, that there is a similar issue, but in terms of proper disposal of the end-of-life equipment, like of the solar panels, nandyan din yun, kasama din talaga lahat 'yan.
Totoo, good sponsor. Although, of course, in terms of RE, kahit when we have to think about the decommissioning nung, nung anumang mga equipment nila, hindi kasama sa mga problema dun 'yung methane control. And after, and I'm glad na factored in na sa cost-benefit analysis, pati ng private sector investors ito, dahil in the same way na, in fact, 'yung major energy players natin sa, sa fossil fuels, or even sa coal, certainly sa petroleum, in fact, are also pioneers in the RE sector. And sila rin 'yung magpa-pioneer dito sa, sa not-gas transition. So it's good to know na ino-factor in nila sa cost-benefit analysis nila. They can compare and contrast even in their own operations, 'yung cost-benefit ng not-gas vis-a-vis RE. And see how in each of these stages, and I would say, and I am guessing the, the good sponsor might also say, na dun sa strategic phase ng RE future, mas ano, masulit 'yung cost-benefit analysis overall. I have two related points, good sponsor. Maybe I'll just put them on the record before going on to my next question. Just welcoming if the good sponsor would care to comment on either of these. One is that, nabanggit ko na rin pahapyaw kanina, the Philippines is signatory to the Paris Agreement, and our NDCs committed a 75% reduction in GHG emissions. Now, not-gas is fossil, and in fact, is more toxic than other fuels, according to scientists. So do we therefore, through this proposed new law, declare that not-gas, or LNG for that matter, is really the safer and cleaner type of fossil fuel? And will the Senate agree to become party to the institutionalization or harmonization of these contested claims? And my second last point on this topic, inviting any comments from the good sponsor. Relatedly, ang PDNG ay ba ay magdadala sa atin papalapit, or lalo lang tayong mapapalayo sa ating reduction target? Totoo ba, Department of Energy naaabot sa 35 not-gas or LNG plants ang planong itayo sa iba't ibang panig ng bansa? Saan-saan ang mga ito? At maari bang malaman kung alin ang not-gas o LNG terminal lamang, at alin naman ang gas-fired power plant, Mr. President? If the good sponsor, or DOE through our good sponsor would care to comment on these last two points?
I'll just make a comment, Mr. President, on something I've put on record before, no? But this is basically coming from the United Nations Environmental Program. Natural gas is a cleaner fuel in the sense that burning it produces fewer conventional air pollutants like sulfur dioxide and particulates from burning coal or oil. So that is coming from the UN Environment Program. As to Her Honor's other questions on, for DOE, we'll just ask DOE to submit.
Thank you for that, good sponsor. Dahil ngayon palang may concerns na halimbawa sa pag-operate or pagtatayo ng mga bagong not-gas or LNG plants dun sa mga environmentally sensitive na lugar natin, halimbawa dun sa Bandang Verde Island Passage, na center of the center of biodiversity, hindi lang sa ating bansa, pero sa buong mundo. And, and just to make of record also, I'm aware of the earlier UNEP articles about not-gas, but these were followed by later UNEP articles na reviewing their own earlier pronouncements about how clean really, or how safe really is not-gas. And UNEP peddled back on their earlier claims that not-gas is that much cleaner and that much safer. So all the more, lending urgency na pang-transition lang talaga siya, hindi siya pang-long term. And I guess, the shorter the transition, the better para umabot sa RE future. So, okay, kanina na simula naming pag-usapan ang good sponsor, or nabanggit namin 'yung price. So how is DOE factoring in geopolitical risks and potential price volatility in its long-term energy planning? And what strategies are being considered to mitigate these risks and ensure price stability for consumers?
That, that question I've answered many times during the interpolation, but I'm very happy to repeat it, because we have a chart that we often show, and either we can give Her Honor a copy, or if there's time to show it here, where it shows that precisely because natural gas price can be volatile, the chart shows that because you have indigenous gas, that is what provides stability in pricing. So until, until we can provide Her Honor with a copy, which we have, you, I'm just going to make gestures with my hand. If you look at the prices of not-gas, it was going up and down, and then it really went up during the time of the, when the Ukraine war started. But if you look at the price of indigenous gas, it was very stable here. So that is precisely why we are pushing for more support in the creation of a really strong natural gas, natural gas development, which will be prioritizing indigenous gas.
Thank you, good sponsor. And this representation looks forward to the information that she will share regarding this question.
So the red line, the red line is the price of natural gas, and the blue line, which is quite stable, is the price of indigenous gas. So repeatedly during the, not, not Her Honor's interpolation, the other interpolations, when the, when the questions keep going back about not-gas being very volatile, eh kaya nga ho tayong may sariling atin, parang nga may energy security tayo. This is what will provide us with energy security, indigenous gas.
Thank you, good sponsor.
And the record speaks for itself. That's also what I wanted to emphasize. It's not a prediction. This is the record. The dates here are span, this is 20 years? 2017, 14, 10, 2010?
2010 until 2024.
Yes, Mr. President, the minority leader would like to interject.
Very interesting graph, Mr. President, with the permission of our sponsor. So 'yung LNG, ano bang color yun? Mustard, that orange. Orange, that would be now the cost of the power from the point of view of the consumer generated by imported natural gas. So that includes now freight plus the regasification niya? Twice, di ba? The regasification would be two times. Ah, di pala, regasification would be once, but the liquefaction, yes, would also be one.
So that already includes, the, the red line already includes the regasification, the cost of regasification, kasama na.
Oh, the gas, gas siya, so na-liquify siya, tapos train and sport siya, at re-gasify siya, and that's the, that's the yellow line, that's the orange line?
Yes.
Yes. So from July 2019 to July 2020, it was even lower than the indigenous natural gas, Mr. President? Is that how we interpret it? Na meron din siyang, meron din siyang point in time, mas murha pa siya, even with liquefaction, freight, and regasification? Is that correct?
Yes, once in a while, but to emphasize, if you look at over 14 years, it's a very, very small window.
Sige po, and then meron palang recent, recently, mga Jan, January 2024, meron din po. So I'm just asking for help to, to interpret the chart. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, minority leader. So, to, yes, good sponsor.
And if I may also add, that is precisely why in the industry, the industry practice is to have long-term agreements, because you also want to secure the best price. And that's really how it is with commodities, no? Ang, ang lamang lang natin dito is, not only is, in the, in the 14 years, not only is indigenous gas cheaper by far, most of the times over the 14-year span, but there is revenue that goes back to the government. So you just want to emphasize that, plus the fact of energy security. And when we say revenues that goes back to the government, idagdag pa natin dun 'yung savings on foreign exchange, foreign exchange, kasi that's another factor. Hindi tayo, hindi tayo vulnerable sa mga foreign exchange rate changes. And then with energy security, we have more control than gas that is coming from other countries. Because like, the, the example that I mentioned in one of the interpolations is that some countries, some suppliers just unilaterally canceled their supply contract was with, was it Pakistan? I keep forgetting what country. Was it Pakistan? And they were left, like they, they endured major power disruptions because they were just so vulnerable. So I end with saying that I don't think there's a price you can put on energy security.
Thank you, good sponsor. Just to make of record, follow-up questions about this, about the price of not-gas or LNG? Just to reflect continuing concerns, no? How does the inherent price volatility of not-gas or LNG compare to the long-term price stability offered by RE sources in the department's risk assessments? And what measures, and these are my last two follow-up questions for this second part of my interpolation. What measures are being taken to ensure that the costs of mitigating not-gas or LNG price volatility don't hinder investments in more stable RE sources, Mr. President? If the good sponsor would care to comment on those two points?
So I think I'm, I'm get, what I'm getting from the resource persons are fairly stable ang renewable energy prices, which is good for us, because that is the shift that we eventually, that is, that is the direction that we're going into. The issue that we have with renewable is really that, that we do not have the capacity to store it, and for now, it does not also, it cannot, it cannot provide for the baseload. So that is the bigger issue, not that the prices are volatile. So if we can solve the storage and the baseload issue, then we are well on our way to, to having more renewable sources of energy.
Thank you, good sponsor. So as a, as an opening point on my final third of my interpolation, as we approach the final set of questions, it's crucial to maintain our focus on the ultimate goal of transitioning to a sustainable renewable energy future. These inquiries delve into the intricate challenges of balancing short-term energy security with environmental and economic sustainability goals. We must remain vigilant against the risks of over-investing in LNG infrastructure that could become stranded assets, potentially burdening consumers, and hindering our competitiveness in a rapidly evolving global energy landscape. So the following last questions address critical issues such as consumer protection, regulatory oversight, and the development of local expertise. They also explore the delicate balance between leveraging international knowledge and fostering domestic capabilities, always with an eye towards ensuring that our energy transition serves the best interests of the Filipino people and positions the Philippines as a leader in RE adoption. Mr. President, good sponsor, I'm able to skip my first two questions in this last part, since they've already been discussed by the good sponsor and me in the earlier part of my interpolation. So I will go to my last three questions for this interpolation. Good sponsor, what specific emergency supply measures and contingency plans is the DOE developing to maintain energy security during the transition period from Malampaya gas to a more diverse energy mix, including not-gas or LNG and renewables? Considering that Malampaya supplies most of Luzon's plants, and neither renewable supplies nor not-gas import facilities will be instantly ready to take up the slack, Mr. President?
So as I've, I've reported in, in the previous interpolation, there is a well that is already being drilled now, and it will already be able to supply next year. That's still part of Malampaya, so that's one. Ah, sorry, next year, 'yung drilling, sorry, the drilling will start next year, and the production will start 2026. Okay. So that's one. And then second is, again, we just go back to the mix. We are still importing LNG. There has been, there is absolutely no intention in this bill to limit the importation of LNG. Of course, we are, this representation is a big supporter of indigenous, but repeatedly we have said that... but repeatedly we have said that our indigenous supply, even if we start drilling in addition to the Malampaya well that will produce by twenty twenty-six, another six, four to seven years will be the earliest production of another, if there's another discovery. And so we still have the LNG and the rest of the mix, it's still there.
Thank you, good sponsor. Medyo nakakatense din 'yung papasukan nating sitwasyon. It really will call on all of DOEs and the attached agencies' capacities na itawid tayo ng maayos through the transition and towards the RE future. How do these emergency measures, in fact, they don't sound like emergency measures lang, they sound like strategic measures, if you can call them that, even during a transition. How do these emergency measures compare in terms of cost-effectiveness and environmental impact to alternatives such as demand-response programs or increased investment in energy storage, Mr. President?
What does her honor, I've asked the experts, no? What does demand, what demand response programs are her honor referring, is her honor referring to?
Okay. Okay. Good sponsor, I'll get back to you on which particular demand response programs. Pero, I think we can pick up the question from the increased investment in energy storage. So how will, how will this compare in terms of cost-effectiveness and environmental impact dun sa emergency measures that we've discussed so far, Mr. President?
From what we know, Mr. President, the situation with the storage for renewables has not really improved much. There are discoveries, but I'm told that they are in the developmental stage. So our desire is that they will be ready for production and that they will be reasonably cost. But right now, there's no, there's no way to compare, because from my understanding, they're not really commercially available.
So I guess, you know, DOE has to accelerate bringing the first crack in terms of storage, for example, for solar energies forward?
No, it's not DOE, Mr. President, it's the investors in the, because sila, sila who 'yung nagpaproduce nun eh. So, and it's not DOE. I mean, I wish we were in a country, dito papasok 'yung mga investments natin sa DOST. If we can, if we can. But I'm guessing that other countries are way ahead of us in trying to develop this technology. So yeah, I'd like a piece of the pie in being a pioneer in that technology. But I think others are ahead of us, and there is not really anything commercially viable yet that will drastically change the landscape for now, Mr. President.
And then, one last time with this question, once more with feeling, what steps are being taken to ensure that these emergency measures, again, don't become a crutch that slows down the transition to a more resilient RE-based energy system, Mr. President?
I think I've answered that question, your honor. Even your honor knows, I think, in your, when you're reading the question, that I've answered that.
All right. But I guess we have to, we have to think out further how the transition doesn't become a permanent period and really eases the transition.
There is a transition plan, your honor.
Yes, Mr. President, good sponsor.
I think your honor and I, your honor and this representation would be both extremely disappointed if there was no transition plan. There is a transition plan, and I think what we can do as the legislative body with our oversight capacity is check how it's moving along, maybe every two years, every three years.
Yes, that's a good idea, good sponsor. Thank you. To my next question, what strategies is the DOE implementing to promote technology transfer and build local capacity in the nat gas sector? And how will these efforts be balanced with the need for international expertise in the short term? And I ask this, good sponsor, because just as we don't want to be dependent on the Chinese for running the national grid, we also don't want to be dependent on US experts who have been engaged with the DOE to always be at hand to keep the nat gas or LNG subsector running, Mr. President?
Well, on the one, on the one, on one hand, I'd love, I'm very excited to share that when I visited the Malampaya platform, I saw with my own eyes, and I was told that our human resources are very much coveted in other countries. And that's something that cannot be replaced by a computer, by a textbook, because these are humans that need to operate this platform. And if, if the sad, sad, sad scenario, which I believe we will not go there, especially if we pass this bill, is if Malampaya ends up closing its operations, and there are no other new drillings going on, we will lose these remarkable, remarkable, well-trained individuals, no? Because even up to now, they're being pirated, they're in demand in other countries. And if I remember right, they're actually sharing, tayo nga 'yung nagshare nung ating knowledge with them, because that is how highly skilled they are, Malampaya having been operational for quite a few years. So that is, so that is technology, that is skills that we have learned, and now it is a hundred percent Filipino-run platform, something to really be proud of. So not transfer, not alagay technology. So if we can replicate, we should, not if we can. The goal is to replicate that in all future drilling operations and development that will occur. And also to add, in the bill in section twelve, we gave, we empowered DOST to undertake scientific and technological research and development for the improvement of new technologies in the natural gas industry.
Thank you, good sponsor. Nabanggit din nga ng good sponsor 'yung challenge ng pirating or piracy. In fact, by way of follow-up, ERC can't even retain its lawyers and technical staff today. So given the limited lifespan of nat gas as a transition fuel, how will we ensure that investments in nat gas-specific skills and technologies and regulatory capacities don't create a workforce and infrastructure bottleneck for the renewable energy transition? So pati 'yung workforce and infrastructure nga natin, mariripurpose beyond nat gas into the ER future?
Well, the lifespan of a Filipino worker is about thirty to forty years. And like we have said, by twenty forty, we want to have fifty percent renewables. So there's still fifty percent out there. So if they started working ten years ago, in twenty forty, that's plus sixteen, so that's twenty-six years. Trabaho pa rin naman sila after that. And then it's going to be a new generation. So all of this, I think, will work well with us. We have a robust and young human resource population. But yeah, I mean, I think what the bill has tried to, has tried to create is this environment, well, what we tried to do is write down the policy that will create an environment that will show the world, the investors, that there is opportunity for investment in natural gas in the Philippines. We need to be confident about that. And that would mean that it goes beyond twenty forty, to be very clear about it. I have no intention of deceiving anyone that by after twenty forty, we're purely renewable. Even in her honor's best case, in her honor's question, this representation's response is that in the different scenarios that DOE put together, they are looking at seventy percent renewable by twenty fifty. So that's twenty-six years away. And then there will still be non-renewables in the mix.
But of course, in the ideal future that I think both the good sponsor and I are dreaming about, just as we want to phase out fossils and coal especially, that there be a future we can reach, or our children at least can reach, and their children, pati nat gas, na phase out na as a transition and more fully RE talaga. And as the good sponsor and I were discussing earlier, 'yung repurposing ng infra, we can also begin to imagine that for our workforce, kasi kahit ngayon, uso na 'yung upskilling and reskilling. So we could begin to plan for that, both for our nat gas workforce in terms of reskilling, for them to become part eventually of an RE workforce. And what measures are being taken to ensure that technology transfer agreements with international nat gas companies don't lock the Philippines into proprietary technologies that could hinder future flexibility?
I'm imagining that in the agreements that will be entered into by the Philippines and consortiums, they will use the best technology available. We will rely on DOE to ensure as much flexibility and room for growth as far as this is concerned. But like any technology, of course, I think it's a given that the investor would expect that there is sufficient time to make use of said technology. But I think in this age, in this day and age, and I'd be very happy, I'd be very curious, in fact, to look at sample agreements on how, on how they treat, because we treat these technologies. Because obviously, if there is a way that you can produce, produce the gas more efficiently, it is in the best interest of the investor to invest in those technologies. So, but her honor's concern is well taken, and DOE has duly notified of this concern.
Thank you very much, good sponsor. So just to my last two shorter questions for today, for tonight. Ito na, nabanggit din namin ng good sponsor kanina on the absorptive capacity of different agencies. Matatanong talaga, kaya pa ba DOE? Kaya ba ERC? Kasi sa tuwing magkikita tayo sa mga hearings, parang kulang na kulang na lang nasabihin ng department o ng commission, na hirap na hirap na kayo sa kasalukuyang industriya. Sa NGCP, GENCOs, at DIUS pa lang ay halos sumuko na 'yung dalawang ahensya. And here, we're establishing an entirely new industry in which none of the department or the commission, or very few among them, within them, have solid experience and competence. So new transmission and distribution systems will be built, with more nat gas terminals and gas plants to be accounted for to comply with the highest standards that the department itself and the commission itself will need to establish, including through this bill. So I wonder if the good sponsor has any comment on that before I go to my last question?
So, Mr. President, in our bill, we, we establish that DOE can create offices and appoint personnel as may be necessary to efficiently and effectively implement this act. And then we have a similar provision, Mr. President, for ERC. Because we, and just for the record, we agree with her honor's observations. In our preliminary meetings with both DOE and ERC, they are really in need of personnel and qualified personnel, Mr. President.
And maybe they wouldn't mind a bit of hand-holding from Congress in thinking about the policies also in terms of capacity, capacity building, or absorptive capacity with this new industry. So to my last question for this interpolation, good sponsor, Mr. President, on the revenue side. Magkano ang kikitain ng gobyerno sa industriyang ito? Hindi kaya ito'y maging negosyo lamang para sa iilan at bulsa din lang nila ang mas makikinabang katulad ng nangyari sa NGCP, Mr. President?
So, Mr. President, we have the numbers for the revenues that the Philippine government has generated from the investment in Malampaya. Over, well, the total figure is over almost three billion US dollars. Sorry, sorry. Over, over three billion dollars was invested in Malampaya, and the... I'm sorry.
Thirteen.
I'm referring to the investment, sorry. Amount remitted by Malampaya to the government is thirteen billion dollars, yes. Roughly six hundred million dollars annually. So that's just for Malampaya. So if you assume that we will have two, or three, or four, or five more, then you just have to multiply that number.
All right. Salamat, good sponsor. So this is the, the value in absolute numbers. And of course, it doesn't talk yet about the distribution in terms of the participation. So these are the remittances to government. It would be interesting to compare how much the, those who remitted also made on their end, because siyempre, when you think about a sustainable and renewable energy future, bukod nga dun sa revenues sa gobyerno, in a way, there's a bigger spread of share in the wealth created than we have seen so far in our energy sector. Whether we're talking about the classic coal and fossil fuel situation, or ito nga 'yung napipintong ira ng nat gas transition, we would like to move forward to an RE future na, in a way, mas may equitability din, or oo, mas may equitable distribution of the proceeds of the industry. So yun, yun po ang mga tanong ko. Marami, marami salamat sa good sponsor for hearing and responding to my questions. Salamat po, Mr. President.
Thank you very much to her honor for the very insightful questions and observations. And we look forward to the amendments that her honor will be making. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ontiveros and Senator Pia. Majority floor leader?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration.
Mr. President, as far as this representation knows, there's no other reservation for interpolation, and therefore we move for the...
Yes, minority floor leader?
Let me just reserve my right to ask questions tomorrow.
Of course, during the period of amendment.
It will definitely be a short interpolation, Mr. President, because after the exhaustive interpolation of senators, Gachalyan and Ontiveros. So, and then we can proceed to, I don't think there will be any damage.
But may I move to close the period of interpolation without prejudice to asking questions during the period? Because we're ready, Mr. President. We've been, we've asked the, those who have listed to interpolate since two weeks ago to prepare their amendments. We've been discussing with them. And I think it's been the practice, and I don't abuse this power, but I think it's, it's...
What's the, I don't see any practical value, Mr. President? We keep this in the interpolation period, resume tomorrow, there'll be a brief interpolation, then we close it, then we have amendments.
What we usually do, with all due respect, dear colleagues, if there's really, if there has been lengthy discussions, which I believe there has been, without prejudice, without prejudice, Mr. President. And the minority floor leader knows that I am very accepting of answering questions. I don't shorten, I stay as long as the questions have to be made. But just to move it forward, Mr. President, and we've done this all the time. I've been asked many times as well, Mr. President, to do the same, out of courtesy also to the other sponsors, to move it forward. I just ask for the same. But if the body does not agree, then... But if the body does not agree, then I just ask for the same courtesy that be given to me that I've given to all our colleagues in the past.
Well, Mr. President, it's just a matter of hours, Mr. President. So that we just keep it in its current parliamentary stage, Mr. President. That's all, that's my request. I promise the interpolation will be short tomorrow, or it can even be waived upon... But we just need to go over the, all of the information that we got tonight in the past few days, Mr. President.
Session is resumed. Majority floor leader?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill Number 2793 without prejudice.
Mr. President?
Sorry, I withdraw my motion, Mr. President. Senator Pia Caetano, the floor?
Yes, Mr. President, I reiterate my previous motion that we close the period of interpolation without prejudice to further questions being asked during the period of amendment. And I'm also prepared to proceed with the committee amendments.
Jolly noted. Majority leader?
Yes, Mr. President, it's been moved by Senator Caetano. So I move that we suspend consideration of Senate Bill Number 2793 without prejudice.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to suspend consideration of Senate Bill Number 2793 without prejudice to reopening the period. Without prejudice to...
Session is... Session is resumed. Acting on the motion of Senator Caetano to close the period of interpolation without prejudice in order for it to introduce individual amendments, given that this is a substitute bill, is there any objection? Hearing none. Same is approved. Majority leader?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the 24th Session, Wednesday, September 18, 2024, and consider the same as approved.
Session is suspended. Majority leader?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to open the period of amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none. Period of individual amendments is hereby declared open. Chair recognizes the honorable sponsor, Senator Pia Caetano, to introduce her individual amendments. You may proceed, ma'am.
Mr. President, on page one, after line five, insert a new subsection A, which shall read as follows. A. Develop natural gas as a reliable fuel for power plants capable of addressing the peaking, mid-merit, and baseload demand of the country to help achieve energy security while progressively transitioning to renewable energy sources. Semi-colon, we submit.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Amendment is approved.
Thank you. We request that the relitering follows.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Renumbering, relitering of the subsequent sections is hereby approved.
On page one, line 16, after the word "chain", insert the phrase which shall read as, comma, "and ensure alignment with the state's policy on transition to a low-carbon future, consistent with the Sustainable Development Goals on increasing the share of renewable energy in the country's energy mix." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Same is approved.
Just for the record, that is Senator Villanueva's amendment. Next item is on page two, line 12. After the word "security", add the phrase "without impairment of contracts." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Same is approved.
This is the Senate President's amendment. Next item. On page three, line 29, insert a period and a new sentence after the word "corporation", which shall read, "As used herein, control," in quotes, "shall mean the power to direct or cause the direction of management policies as an inherent part of..." ..."policies as an inherent part of decision-making power." So move, Mr. President.
Just to clarify, delete the semicolon and replace it with a period. And the amendment read will be a new sentence. Would that be correct?
Insert a period. On page three, line 29, insert a period and a new sentence after the word "corporation."
Exactly. So the semicolon will be deleted?
Yes, yes. No... No, the semicolon will happen after the insertion, Mr. President.
Ah, just to clarify. Thank you for the clarification. Any objection? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. That was a Senator Villanueva amendment. Next item is also a Senator Villanueva amendment. On page five, on page four, line five, after the phrase "shall be determined by the DOE", delete the phrase "based on production levels of indigenous natural gas source and other relevant factors", and insert the phrase, "taking into account the production levels of indigenous natural gas sources, the capacity of existing and future PDNGI facilities, and other relevant factors to ensure a stable and reliable supply of natural gas." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Amendment is approved.
Thank you. That was a Senator Villanueva amendment. Next item is also a Senator Villanueva amendment. On page five, line 13, delete the word "condensers" and replace with "re-condensers." On this... I'll continue, Mr. President, because it's on the same page. Same page and same line number. After the word "send out", insert the word "systems." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Amendment is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item, on page seven, line 11, after the word "PDNGI facilities", insert "as defined in Section 4AA of this act." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Same is approved.
The same, the next item is a Villanueva, Senator Villanueva amendment as well. On page eight, line 23, after the word "transparent", insert "fair, comma, reasonable." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? There being none. Same is approved.
The next item, Mr. President, is also a Senator Villanueva amendment. It's on page 11, line 2. After the word "act", insert a new sentence which shall read as, "In reviewing applications for permits, the DOE shall ensure consistency of the application with the declaration of policies in this act and that the proposed project is technically and financially viable by ensuring, among others, sufficient supply of imported LNG or indigenous natural gas and clear source of funding for the project." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. The next item is an amendment coming from the Senate President. It's a few items, but all in the same section. On page 12, line 10, after the acronym EPIRA, delete the word "end" and replace it with a comma. And then on the same page, line 11, after the phrase "power as may be", insert the words "given to it under applicable law," or... And then on the same page, delete lines 13 to 17 and replace with, "In comparing the price of indigenous natural gas or power produced therefrom with other fuel sources, the government's share and other revenues in the production of the indigenous natural gas sold to power plants shall be taken into account." Then on the same page, delete lines 18 to 20. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. On page 15, line 10, after the word "shall", delete the phrase "exempt such project from the." And then on the same page, delete lines 11 to 12 and replace it with, "Process the application for the certification precondition under Section 59, Chapter 8 of the IPRA in accordance with the processes provided in Republic Act Number 11234 or the Energy Virtual One-Stop Shop EVOs Act." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. On page 15, delete lines 19 to 23 and replace with, "The DOE shall be the lead agency in the development of aggregation in the country and shall issue the applicable policies for the implementation thereof. It may likewise delegate this function to any of its attached agencies and instrumentalities." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
That was an amendment by the Senate President. Next item is an amendment by Senator Poe. On page 18, line 13 to 14, after the word "facilities", delete the sentence, "This shall not be construed as confirming public utility status to the permit holders thereof." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the deletion? There being none. Same is approved.
The next item, Mr. President, is on page 18, line 17. After the word "buyers", insert the phrase, "subject to legal prohibitions on uncompetitive acts." And on the same page, lines 19 to 21, delete the sentence, "An aggregator may engage in the ownership and operation of natural gas-fired power plants or vice versa, subject to approval of PCC and DOE." On the same page, line 23, affect, after the word "security", insert the phrase "the cost of electricity." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendments on page 18? There being none. Same is approved.
That was an amendment by the Senate President. Next item is an amendment by Senator Poe. On page 18, lines 26 to 30, and on page 19, lines 1 to 3, delete the whole Section 27. Renumber the succeeding section accordingly. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. The next amendment is from Senator Villanueva. On page 19, line 26, after the word "transparent", insert "fair, reasonable." I so move, Mr. President.
Transparent, comma, fair...
After the word "transparent, comma", insert "fair, comma, reasonable."
Any objection? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page 21, line 4, after the acronym DOH, comma, insert the acronym DOLE, comma. I so move.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
That was also a Senator Villanueva amendment. The next item is on page 22, line 14. After the word "act", insert the phrase, "provided, comma, that such acts or omissions are lawful and not contrary to the provisions of this act and its implementing rules and regulations." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you. The next item is an amendment of Senator Villanueva. On page 22, line 28, after the word "act", insert the phrase, comma, as may be further amended. Amended. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on page 25, delete lines 11 to 13 and replace with, "The obligations of contracting parties to NGSPAS entered into prior to the effectivity of this act shall not be impaired." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? There being none. Same is approved.
That was an amendment of the Senate President. Next item is on page 26. After line 24, insert a new section which shall read as follows. Saving clause. "The provision of Presidential Decree Number 87, otherwise known as the Oil Exploration and Development Act of 1972, shall remain applicable and shall not in any way be amended or repealed by the provisions of this act and its rules and regulations. Renumber the succeeding sections accordingly." I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Same is approved.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Majority floor leader?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to suspend consideration of Senate Bill Number 2793 without prejudice to ask questions.
Any objection to the, any objection to the motion of the majority leader, rather? There being none. Same is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the 24th Session, Wednesday, September 18, 2024, and consider the same as approved.
Any objection? There being none. Reading of the Journal is hereby dispensed with and the same is considered and deemed as approved.
Some admin matters, Mr. President. Mr. President, about discussions with the chairperson of the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Government Corporations and Public Enterprise, I move to transfer the primary committee referral of House Bill Number 10592, rationalizing the mandate of the power sector assets and liabilities management corporation from the Committee on Energy to the Committee on Government Corporations and Public Enterprises, and subsequently be considered as part of Committee Report Number 331, which reported out Senate Bill Number 2837. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection to the motion of the majority leader? There being none. Same is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we consider the proposed Senate Resolution Number 1204.
Any objection? There being none. The motion is hereby approved. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 1204 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that adjourn the session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, September 25, 2024.
Any objection?
Objection, Mr. President. One minute objection.
Session is suspended. Majority leader?
Mr. President, I withdraw my previous motion.
Any objection to the withdrawal? There being none. Same is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 23 and recognize Senator Alan Caetano.
Any objection? There being none. Consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 23 is in order. The Honorable Senator Alan Caetano is recognized for his manifestation and brief remarks on the same. You may proceed, sir.
Mr. President, Mr. Minority Leader, Mr. Majority Leader. In behalf of the people of Taguig, who is very grateful first to God, secondly, to all those who are involved in a almost one generation of a legal battle into, you know, making Taguig whole in such a way that all of its former territory would be now together as one community and one city. And in thanking my colleagues who are still here, it's almost 9:00 PM, and giving me the chance to sponsor and give brief remarks about this concurrent resolution. We were left with a problem, as you know, despite the strict rules of the Supreme Court against a second motion for reconsideration. And after that, I think it's of public record naman kung ano nangyari, 'yung dates nung final decision, 'yung mga struggles hanggang ngayon nung mga kababayan namin from EMBO. And there's one struggle that they need the help of Congress, which is to be able to run for Congress and to be able to vote for a member of Congress. It is most basic in the US Constitution, where we copied our Constitution, that no taxation without representation. So unless we're ready to say that lahat ng taga-EMBO ay wala ng buis, we should not take out their right to have a representative and to vote for a representative. So recently, the Commission on Elections said that they cannot vote for congressmen in the second district of Makati dahil wala na sila sa Makati. Now, the both, both cityhood laws of Makati and Taguig said that the cityhood law is dependent on the final resolution of any boundary dispute settled, of course, by the right forum. But this does not automatically amend the congressional district. So this concurrent resolution is meant to guide the comelect, meant to give them an option, meant to express the sentiments of the sovereign people through the House and the Senate. The House specifically, the local... the Senate, the House specifically, the local constituency, the Senate, the national constituency, but both Houses equal, to tell the comelect that there are now two evils possible. One evil is that they'll not be able to run nor vote. The other one is that the comelect has no basis of where they can vote and where the barangays which district. So this concurrent resolution is an attempt. It's not a perfect attempt, but it's an attempt until the legislature in the future can pass a new law regarding the districts. So we seek with this concurrent resolution to make our will known to the Commission on Election. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. President.
Yes, with your respect. Are you done? Are you done?
So, Mr. President, you know, yeah, I'm just saying, Mr. President, that a little over three hundred thousand people and the number of voters is just on the resolution. We cannot do nothing. So I know some of our colleagues have, sa Tagalog, parang agam-agam. Even sa hearing ng City Council, I sat in, listened to our kababayan from Embos and other barangays, and, you know, we're all searching for the perfect solution. And the reality is that in this Congress, nagkaroon ng moratorium on new districts. And nangyari din po na 'yung time element, kasi filing na ng candidacy ng first week of October, no? So this resolution, if this was the House, it's simply a local bill. So it has to do with Taguig-Genios. But in the Senate, of course, it is the wider issues, and the issue here is very basic. It's representation. It is suffrage, no? So, Mr. President, I know there are a lot of questions. I tried to answer them myself, did a lot of legal research. I am confident the House Legal Department, who's also doing their research, will find that everything is in order. But let me reiterate, no? Any solution is better, as long as, of course, it's a good solution, no? Any good solution is better than doing nothing. And, you know, with one day left till the session and then a few weeks till the voting, you know, the people of the Embos will be very grateful that we gave them the choice, diba? Sinong gustong tumakbo at sinong gustong nilang iboto? Sinong gusto tumakbo, sinong gusto iboto? Let me reiterate, Mr. President. Wala ng problema po sa mayor, vice mayor, councilors, because nagstatement na po ang Commission on Election that they can vote for the councilors and the vice mayor and the mayors. And in fact, adjustments have been made to make sure they have representation sa population nila. So it's really the congressional district ang problema. And, you know, you cannot have a caretaker for a district that doesn't exist. So meaning if today ang filing, may magfile for District Two ng Makati, may magfile ng District One and Two ang Taguig in Limbo or, you know, it's like they will be outside the Philippines, no? So I hope the, our friends will take our word for it that we consulted the members who are not here in passing this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. President, if I may.
What is the pleasure of Senator Zubiri?
Yeah, just two issues. One is, this was not in the daily agenda, this concurrent resolution number twenty-three, but I know, of course, our good colleague would like to have not, his area not be disenfranchised in voting. So sometimes we take it up, important matters such as this, to be able to answer the times, and this particular issue is on the disenfranchisement of these ten Embbo barangays. However, Your Honor, I'm trying to get in touch with our colleague who is from Makati, and I do not know, does this have any implication to Senator Binay's?
I can state for the record, Mr. President, it has nothing to do with Makati anymore, because all of these barangays are now under Taguig, being administered by Taguig, and the problem is they'll not be able to vote for any.
Just a one-minute suspension, Mr. colleague. One-minute suspension on Mr. President.
Session is suspended.
Mr. President, Senator Zubiri is seeking the floor.
No, he wants to make a manifestation. I'll wait for his manifestation.
Senator Kaitano.
Senator Kaitano is recognized for his manifestation.
Mr. Senate President, before that, is there, am I correct that the former Senate President wants to move that we suspend the consideration of this concurrent resolution and discuss it tomorrow? If yes, then may I make a?
Yeah. Mr. President, my question, first of all, I don't know anything about this bill. Nothing. It just come out of there, just came out of there. So this is a Senate Concurrent Resolution. This is not a simple resolution. And I was a Majority Leader, like you've been also a Minority Leader, I believe, a Majority Leader. And the concurrent resolution is, has a force of, before the Supreme Court came out with the decision that it doesn't have a force of law, but it used to have a force of law. So ang question ko lang dyan, Mr. President, is, with due respect to him, I know it's a local issue, let's, I know it's a local issue, and it's important to you guys, and I don't want to disenfranchise anyone. Ang akin lang sana, explain sana sa amin, ano itong pag-usapan natin. Yun lang. And I, you know, I asked a colleague who represents particularly before this ten Embbo barangays, I asked her, and she also doesn't know what's going on. Due courtesy sila ba? Sort of some respect and due courtesy. Yun lang akin, Mr. President. Again, you know, if I raised my voice, it's because, you know, I was, it didn't have to go that way, and I apologize if I raised my voice, okay? Ang akin dyan, if it will help you, maybe we can pass this, we can take it up tomorrow. Ang akin lang naman dyan, is nabigla ako, dahil nasa taas nga ako, at biglang may concurrent resolution about these barangays. Wala naman sa agenda today, Mr. President. So my appeal to the good gentleman is, give us time to at least explain to us what it is all about. We've no caucus, we've never had a caucus since I asked for one in the beginning of the incumbency of the good Senate President. So I don't know, if we had a caucus, you could have raised it there, and I said, this is a very simple piece of resolution, nobody's going to get affected, we're going to get them to vote, at least in these elections. You know, if I was told that, then I would have no problem. Pero biglaan eh, na'y ko lang nakita 'yung document here, just now, when I went down. So that is all I'm asking, because we're not the House of, you know, we don't want to be like other establishments, ano lang tayo, in the midnight hour, we're passing measures. No, we're not like that. Senator Kaitano knows that. That's her pet peeve. She doesn't like to pass things in the middle of the night where nobody's around. I know that, because we have, we have traditions, and it's a time-bound tradition. So mine is not, I'm not even asking anymore, I'm not raising a point of order, because our agreement in the past is that we will take up on the floor what is the agenda for the week. And this is not even in the agenda for the week, kasi bago lang to. And I understand, kung bago lang to, because of the lateness of the hour, meaning the lateness of the session, and this might be able to help Senator Kaitano. But we have another session tomorrow, Mr. President, so there should be no problem. All we need to know is just understand, what is this all about? How can we help you? I couldn't mad disenfranchise sila eh. Ayoko din, Mr. President. 'Yung mga taga-Taguig at sa Embbo barangays, ang gusto ko lang sana is, just explain to us what this is all about, because this is a concurrent resolution. If it was a simple resolution, saying that the Senate would like the comelect to recognize this Embbo barangays and come up with this procedure, wala po akong problema, Mr. President. But this is a concurrent resolution, which is a tad higher, a notch higher in terms of implementation and validity. Yun lamang po, Mr. President. No offense met to my dear colleague, I know, it means a lot to him. I'm not here to stall, and I'm not here to disenfranchise anyone. Yun lamang po, Mr. President. Yung akin lang, sana ma-explain lang sa amin. And with your respect, we're all elected senators here. I will not pass a measure na hindi ko papadaanan sa inyo, or to anyone, in fact, without going through the motions. Yun lamang po, Mr. President. Yun lang ang request ko. It's just a simple request, the tradition should be followed, at least to explain to us, at least come up with an interpolation on the measure on this particular concurrent resolution. Because even with simple resolutions, we have periods of interpolation, we have period of amendment in simple resolutions, lalo ng concurrent resolutions. So yun lamang ang request ko, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President, let me just state for?
Before the Honorable Kaitano responds with his manifestation, Chair would like to place on the record. Number one, as correctly pointed out by Senator Zubiri, this is a concurrent resolution, and by virtue of the Supreme Court decision, is no different from an ordinary resolution. Hence, it does not have to go through three separate readings on three separate days. Number two, we did give due courtesy to Senator Nancy, even if this involves barangays that are no longer part of Makati, but because the Chair thought it used to belong to Makati, we cleared it with her. I don't know if the statement of the gentleman stated on the record that we consulted their administrative staff. The answer is no. We consulted the Chief of Staff named Christine and her Head of Legis named Isa, who according to them consulted the good Senator about it, and the response was, she can confirm or deny the same tomorrow, it has nothing to do with Makati because it has everything to do with Taguig. Hence, we proceeded and clarified it with the Minority Leader, with the indulgence of the Minority Leader, given the urgency of the matter as raised by Senator Kaitano. Just to place that on the record. Senator Kaitano.
Mr. President, thank you for clarifying that, because I'd just like to put on the record, this is my third term as Senator. I've been a Majority Leader, Minority Leader. Never po ako nagpalusot ng kahit anong bill sa kahit anong oras. I know my responsibilities here, I know the rules. Lahat naman tayong hindi perfect, siguro ilan lang sa kwarto na'to, and mostly they're from the staff, ang memorize ang rules, no? Kaya nga makikita 'nung mga taong nanunod ngayon, lumalapit pa kami dyan sa harap or dito sa gilid sa staff, kapagka magtatanong sa rules, because may precedents yan, rich na 'yung history. Now, we did not violate the rules because the joint resolution, the concurrent resolution was filed yesterday, and unlike before that, it was treated like a, with force of law, dinadaan po natin yan in a process, that's like that. But after the Supreme Court decision, na sinasabi, it's like a resolution, it's the sentiment, 'yung kaluooban ng House at Senate, we treat it like any other resolution. The person objecting now was our former Senate President. He knows naman that you do not go to all twenty-four senators. You go to the minority because you're part of the majority, and I did go to the majority last night pa. Last night, the Senate President advised me to talk to Senator Nancy, and due to some recent misunderstandings, he offered na, kung gusto mo, ako nakakausap, and I waited all day long until nga magrespond 'yung Chief of Staff niya. So it's not just an emotional issue, it's not a local issue. It's an issue of constitutional importance, the ability for people to vote. The good Senator, Senator Zubiri said, kung i-explain lang sa kanya, kaya nga ako lumapit sa kanya sa harap eh. Sabi ko, gusto mo i-explain? Sabi niya, bukas na. Sabi ko, I don't want to take the risk. Nakita niyo naman 'yung mga ulan ngayon, eh, kung bumagyo bukas at mag-adjourn tayo. So walang taga-embbo na pwedeng tumakbong Congressman, walang pwedeng bumoto. This is a five-page resolution, very easy reading. I'm ready now to answer any of his questions or questions ni Senator Binay. If he apologizes for raising his voice, me too. I mean, I know, it's still emotional for him. That's why ilang beses na na nagsisigawan dito, never ko siya in approach, never ko siya kinontra, nakaupo lang ako dyan sa harap, or dito, or dun sa tabi ni Senator Tulfo. Tumatabi-tabi lang po ako. But that's why I humbly came to him kanina while he was on the phone with Senator Binay, and said, can I explain this to you? Pwede ko ba i-explain sa'yo? Kung may question, so let's not come here and say na, hindi, bukas na'to, ipaliwanag lang. I'm ready to, to, ano, to explain it to him now. It's a very simple resolution. It's very simple. They are allowed to vote for mayor, vice mayor, councilors, each and every one of them. But the comelect said they are now Taguig and they're not under Makati, under the Supreme Court decision. At sabi ng comelect, you cannot vote for Congressman. So Congress is left with two things, doing nothing, or telling the comelect, if you ask us, you should let them vote, and these are the districts. What's my basis for this is the districts? Vote the official statistics and the hearings of the Sanggunean Panglunsod of the City of Taguig. It's that simple. This isn't a complicated bill. We all know naman, pag nagfile tayong bill, your office takes judicial notice once it's read in first reading. So kahit ito'y concurrent resolution, may first reading to. Hindi kailangan lapitan 'yung bente cuatro, but if that is the pleasure of Senator Zubiri, I humbly did that kanina. So but let's not make it appear that this is a simple, this is a complicated bill, this has implications, is ganito, and let's just wait till tomorrow. That's not true, diba? The resolution is there, diba? Naki-usap na lang, at sabi nga ni Minority Leader, please make it brief, for a simple reason. I think the Minority Leader and Senator Risa are up, what, five, six AM sa dami ng papeles? They usually go home from session, eight, nine PM. They have early hearings, but they're here, diba? So sa akin, Mr. President, if the former Senate President heard me, I'm making appeal, not for myself, you know, wala akong vested interest dito in the sense that my wife as mayor, sinabi na ng comelect, pwede siyang tumakbo, and pwede siyang iboto sa Embbo. So with or without this resolution, wala tong epekto sa aking wife, sa Vice Mayor, sa Consejal. Ang epekto nito, wala rin sa kandidato naming Congressman. Because with or without this resolution, 'yung kakampi naming Congressman ay tatakbo sa District One at District Two, 'yung kapartido. Wala rin itong epekto sa katunggali naming Congressman. Because with or without this resolution, tatakbo sila. Sino maapektuhan dito? 'Yung more than two hundred thousand na qualified sa Embbo na gustong tumakbong Congressman, at 'yung gustong bumoto ng Congressman. And after June thirty, saan sila lalapit for representation sa kanilang district? Right now, nahihilo na sila. If they go to the Congressman of the second district of Makati, possibly, I don't know his response, possibly, hindi na namang kayo sa Makati. If you go to the first or second district of Taguig, at hindi magkasunduhin Congressman, ano, mag-aagawan sila, kasi pareho nilang hindi distrito. So this is a mere resolution saying the sentiment of Congress. If anyone here wants to say na, I disagree, okay lang. If anyone here wants to say na, hindi, dapat 'yung barangay na ganyan, or wants to ask me a question, I'm ready as much as makakaya ko. Pero ang masasagot ko lang sa inyo, Mr. President, and this is for my, tinuturing ko rin kaibigan, kahit may heated, ah, siguro naman, nineteen ninety-eight ko pa kasama si Senate President Zubiri. So siguro, we're entitled one heated argument, which is tonight, no? Kasi nineteen ninety-eight ko pa naman siya, madalas, magkaiba kami ng stand, pero hindi naman kami nagkakainitan. So if you're apologizing for raising, I also apologize for raising my voice, my friend. But, you know, if this was bukid nun, at hindi sila makakaboto, hindi sa igigive ko lang sa'yo eh. I'll stand there, I'll listen to you, I'll even help you, kung hindi mo kasunduhin Nancy. But 'yung nangyari tonight, I mean, ikaw na magsabi, diba? I mean, you could have said, one-minute suspension, usap tayo. But yun nga, I mean, wala naman akong choice eh. If you guys want to wait for tomorrow, but if something happens tomorrow, diba, what do I tell the people of Embbo? Sorry, hindi kayo pwedeng tumakbong Congressman? Kasi walang ginawa ang Senate? Diba? Ang House are ongoing pa. Nandun 'yung, nandun si Mayor Kaitano together with the other officials of Taguig. Precisely nga, we don't want to wait till the last minute. I mean, I wouldn't risk anything that important to you, brother, to the last minute. So kung merong kang pagtingin sa matagal natin pagsasama, let's debate on other critical areas that we really disagree. Eto naman, kahit tignan mo na mabuti, there's nothing hidden there. There's no hidden, una-una kong hidden agenda, tinago namin yan. Please take a look at the resolution. There's? There's nothing there which isn't quite clear, factual, you can get from any website, diba? But, you know, let me just extend ng konte ah. We treat it as a bill. You call all the barangays, you call the comelect. They'll tell us everything we want to know na. "We prefer a third district", gusto namin sa Taguig, third district. Bakit hindi? Madadagdagan kami ng congressman. Ang problema nga, may moratorium at hindi naaabot ng October 1 to 8, diba? Oh. So what's the other option? The other option for us now is huwag silang pabutohin. That will be the first time in Philippine history na meron taong bawal bumoto sa kanyang congressman. Meron nga tayong, ano eh, bill na 'yung overseas voting, payagan na rin sila sa local eh. Kasi sa ngayon, diba, president, vice president, at senators, 'yung absentee voting, may bill nga tayong napabutohin sila. Eh, eto na sa Pilipinas eh. Hindi makakaboto. It's not your fault, it's not my fault, it's not the Binay's... It's no one's fault because 'yung timing and circumstance of Supreme Court decision and 'yung pleasure ng House na huwag magdagdag ng miyembro. Some of them feel we're an exceptional case at dapat payagan. Hindi namin binaso yun. And even if hindi, kung kusa sa loob nila magpasan ang third district, hindi na kaya in one week. What will we do? Pipilitin natin by December or January na magpasan ang third district. In the meantime, all the candidates in that area will know what to do. There will be no discussion on the issues, whether local or national, diba? So yun naman sa akin, no? Na, I leave it to the pleasure of the former Senate President and gentleman from Bukid noon, no? If you ask me, ako'y nakikiusap, ipasanan natin, since walang masasaktan dito. Kung may makita kayong masama tomorrow, you can move to recall it. And the other members will be here, oh. Kung may mangyari tomorrow for one reason or the other at hindi tumapasa, how do we answer our constituents? Constituents, binoturing naman tayo nung kanya-kanya nating lugar eh, diba? So maybe that would be acceptable to him, that we pass it. If they see something wrong, tell me. Ako mismo magmove to reconsider, then we will discuss it. Nandito naman siya. Any member who's here and voted for it can move for the reconsideration.
May I ask for a minute suspension, Mr. President?
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Senator Zubiri is recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. After deliberating with the good sponsor. No, I just wanted to find out, because initially, I thought it was a creation of a new district, like an Embbo district, which is clearly, we can't do. It has to be a creation by law. So these are the things that I wanted to learn more about before the actual filing. So at least now, I was able to consult with the good gentleman from Taguig. And it's a clarification that we're not creating a new district. It's just trying to ask, well, asking the comlect to try to absorb the other, these two, these 10 areas in the other two districts. Is that correct, Your Honor? So...
Is that correct, Senator Kaitano?
It's correct, Mr. President and former Senate President. Na, as I said, no? We're trying to make the best of a very bad situation in one sense. They're not part of the Second District of Makati, but they're also not part of any other district, and there's no time. And we're not sure if a third district. So what we're saying lang is ipasok sila proportionally and contiguously to the existing District 1 and 2 of Taguig. And since the House have a present representative of District 1 and 2, then if they pass it, then now you will have the City Council, the House, and the Senate just giving the comlect a sense na dapat pabutohin sila.
With that explanation, Your Honor, Mr. President, and knowing fully well that this is a resolution, it's like a sense, ika nga, ng senado, a sense of Congress, because it's a concurrent resolution. Then I actually did not interpose any objection, Mr. President. I just wanted to, for the good gentleman to clarify with me what this concurrent resolution is all about. That's all, Mr. President. And I interposed no objection.
Sir President, just for the record, sa elevator lang, nagyayabang ako sa staff ko. Sabi ko, sa lahat ng Kaitano, ako pinakamalamig ulo, kasi mainit na ulo nung ate ko kanina. And 'yung dalawa kong kapatid, madali ding uminit ulo. And then uminit ulo ko ngayon. So I apologize to everyone, including Senate President Zubiri. Technically, may excuse ako, kasi I'm on steroids, dahil hinihika ako ngayon. But it's still no excuse, so pasensya na kayo.
Me also, I apologize for my behavior, Mr. President. I mean, we've known each other since 1998.
We have known each other since 1998.
Yeah, so...
And while we're in the spirit of asking for apologies, Chair would also like to apologize for the lateness of the hour. So with no objections from Senator Zubiri, may I now recognize the Majority Leader? Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. President. No member wish to interplay... Wish to propose amendments to the measure? I move to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 23.
Any objection? There being none. Proposed concurrent Senate Resolution Number 23 is hereby adopted. Thank you, Ms. I...
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, September 25, 2024.
Any objection? There being none. Session is adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, September 25, 2024.